Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Special Board of Commissioners meeting this Wednesday, May the 17th, at 5:00 p.m. We typically have a -- one of our members from the ministry give us an invocation. I will give an invocation, and then after that, we will stand for the pledge. So if you will bow your heads, please. Father in heaven, we commit this meeting to you. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of our life and ministry as we discuss the affairs of this county. We ask for your will to be done. Show us your purpose. Enlighten us that we may know how you want us to accomplish our task. We desire your glory and blessing in all that we do. Direct our thoughts, our words, our decisions, and actions towards the right path, and help us stay on track. Let your will be done this evening as we plan and make decisions for our county. Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, folks, Commissioner Tobin is not able to be with us this evening, and I would ask that you would continue to keep him certainly in your thoughts and your prayers. And Commissioner Couch also is not able to be with us this evening. He had a prior commitment when we established this special meeting for this evening. So with that being said, I will turn the agenda over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Two things, just an introduction. This is a special meeting, and it's different than our normal meetings that we have on the first Monday of each month. By statute, we're only allowed to discuss, and we're only allowed to take action on the items that are listed on this agenda. We can't add anything to it or do anything different because any of those new things weren't put in the notice when we noticed it. So we have to limit our actions tonight to what's on this agenda. Item one on the agenda is the opening remarks from the chairman.
Just a couple of quick items I'd just like to bring to the folks' attention. On June the 2nd, The Lost Colony will start its 86th season. Quite an incredible run, longest-running outdoor drama in the country. It will, once again, it will run through August the 26th. They have, I'm sure most of you are aware, they have what's called Dare Nights, and they are scheduled for June 9th, 16th, and the 23rd. All the outdoor drama presentations will begin at 8:30 p.m., and they will be from Monday through Saturday. And tickets this year are starting at $25 each. If you would like more information about The Lost Colony, just go online to thelostcolony.org, O-R-G. And then the second item, very good news. Monday, the National Park Service cleared the path for the Buxton Multi-Use Path. That will be about a 1.6-mile-long path that will be about 10 to 12 feet wide, and they will do it in two segments. The plan is to award construction contract by the end of this fiscal year, 2023, which the end of their fiscal year is September 30. And that first segment could certainly be completed by next summer. So that's great news. I know you're excited to hear about that, Mary Ellen. So I'm sure you will report that in the style and fashion that you normally do on the Coastland Times. So anyhow, it's great news for Buxton. County manager, turn it back over to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda. This is a public hearing with regard to a zoning text amendment for the removal of 22 zoning districts from the residential sections of Section 22-31.1 for the Cluster Home Development Ordinance. And I'd ask Noah if he'd come up and just introduce that and give you a little information before we conduct the public hearing.
Good evening, Noah.
Good afternoon. So in March, the Board of Commissioners asked the planning board and planning staff to go back and look at potential revisions to the cluster home ordinance. So in April, the planning board reviewed the ordinance, and a motion was made during that review to remove cluster homes from a number of districts. In further discussion, you know, the list kept growing, so in further discussion, it was recommended that we remove it from ordinances that do not -- or zoning districts that do not allow for multifamily development, since we have seen that through engineered systems, a level of density is allowed that is, you know, inharmonious with the single-family districts that the cluster home ordinance has, you know, found. And going through that list, it was 22 residential districts, as the county manager has stated. And the planning board, you know, agreed with that recommendation of the removal from 22 districts and found it consistent with land use policy, land use compatibility policy number three. In the packet that you have is a table that shows the 22 districts that would be removed, the 12 districts that would remain. There's also maps that highlight the districts where it would remain to kind of give you an idea of where in the county it would stay in the ordinance. After the close of the hearing, y'all should be in a position to act on the motions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Noah.
Yes, sir.
Questions for Noah?
Do you have any questions, or no? Okay.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll conduct the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for this public hearing. This public hearing is only with relation to the change of the zoning ordinance, the changes to Chapter 22-31.1. If you're here to speak about anything else, you need to wait until our June meeting and speak at public comment, because this is limited solely to this public hearing that we're having on this zoning change. As with our other public comments and public hearings, if you signed up, I'll recognize you. When I do come to the podium, state your name, where you're from. Limit your comments to five minutes. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and the red light will come on when you need to conclude your remarks. Tonight, I'll start in Buxton. Is there anybody in Buxton who'd like to speak to this issue?
No comment in Buxton.
No comment. So I'll start down our list. First, I have, is it Audra Shackelford?
Welcome this evening, Ms. Shackelford.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Audra Shackelford. I live at 132 Roscoe Road in Wanchees. I'm here tonight to talk to you about removing the language from Wanchees. And the reason being, it's kind of a unique dynamic. I stand before you wearing several hats at the moment. I am the wife of a fisherman, a mother of three. The oldest works for Dare County. His wife is a teacher at Manio Elementary School. My middle daughter is a nurse in the ER at Outer Banks Hospital, and my youngest son is enrolled in Manio High School. We own a home that we use as a short-term rental, so there's that, which is also located in Wanchees. We also run three businesses out of our home, since we're in the VR district, which we knew we were allowed to do at the time. And we also board horses and own our own horses on our property. But the kicker of the whole thing is the fact that I've been involved, actively involved in the real estate industry for about 20 years. So I may be looking for a job when this is over. All that being said, as the wife of a fisherman, first and foremost, obviously, one of the things that concerns me with regards to cluster homes, and part of the issue here, obviously, is the nature of the ordinance itself, and it's loosely written jargon. It's problematic, and we're seeing that, I think we all are. The development that we're looking at right now obviously pushes it to the nth degree. That being said, watershed, water quality, environmental quality, these things are all very real. We don't necessarily have really anything in place with regards to fill amounts. So then we start talking about neighbors, neighborhoods, roads, flooding, storms, things of that nature. As the mother and mother-in-law that I am, I hear complaints from my son in particular about lack of space in our local schools, so Manio Schools being full. I hear it from the teacher's perspective, from the elementary school, but I also hear it from the high school's perspective as a student. Obviously, there and again, when we talk about this style of project wherein, you know, we just have so many houses and such a short amount of -- such a small amount of space, I hear it from my daughter at the hospital. You know, they catch a lot of heat at the hospital, she works in the ER. And she said, "Mom, we only have 20 beds in our med-surg unit." And she said, "People are having to wait in the waiting room for so long. We have so many people. Every other hospital is two hours away," and I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. But the reality is, they're coming under fire because they're having to deal with the patients that are the most emergent. So you do have long waiting lines in the emergency room. Infrastructure is what we're looking at here. As the owner of a rental property, and I'm having this conversation with other friends of mine who have short-term rental properties, whether they're in Wanchees, whether they're on the beach, you're hearing the same thing I'm hearing. The Airbnb numbers are not the same. The Chamber of Commerce may be willing to say to you that their rental numbers this season are not the same. For the first time in all my years, today, I put a 90-day rental in the MLS. I've never had to do that before. So things are changing, and I think we have to be careful how we go moving forward. You know, that's a different topic. But because, again, going back to where we are, because of our zoning, we run the fishing business. I run my real estate business, and we also board horses out of our location as well. So we do run those businesses, because when we -- boarding those horses is because we're located on 10 contiguous acres. So you can imagine, I look out my front door every day and try to picture what it looks like to have 60 houses. And it's not just a me deal. This is any 10-acre parcel if we don't do something about this going forward. All that being said, the last hat, being that of a real estate agent, is such that if I'm working with a buyer, nine times out of 10, I'm trying to make sure that my buyer's making a good investment. And I did the math today with today's going rate at 329, and if we factored in assumed HOA costs, and they weren't exorbitant, plus they have to pay their own property taxes and their own insurance on those houses, you'd be looking at payments upwards of $2,500 a month. So as a buyer's agent, am I going to say to that buyer, "I think this is a good investment for you, because there's only 59 other houses right here besides you, and maybe they'll take care of them. Are we going to be able to have any equity?" So in closing, I know my time is almost up, I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to address this, because I do see it from so many different angles, and I'd like to see this language removed from Wanchees. Thank you very much.
To be followed by Angel Corey.
Welcome, Ms. Tillot.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the board. I'm here tonight to talk about removing, rescinding the cluster home ordinance from our ordinances. I would just like to just say a few things about Wanchees, as many people have already said over the months of testimony here. But we are a very closely-knit community. We're a family community. I live on Old Schoolhouse Road, and I live on a property that's only had four owners. And where we inherited the property was from my grandfather, who was the first chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And that property has been in the family since the 1700s. And we're a family-ornated community of fishermen, of boating, people having customary residence with their family business on their property. And that's why the zoning was created in 2006 for a dwelling unit as an accessory use, as a customary use for a commercial business. And I would like to mention this, that you all may not be aware of, but in 2004, the Dare County Board of Commissioners were very concerned about development in Wanchees. Back in the 2000s and up to 2003, there was a lot of businesses going on. The beach was booming, and we were not zoned. The commissioners had been down there twice in 25 years to suggest zoning to the people of Wanchees. They did not want zoning. They just said, "We're not interested." So as time went on, two of the commissioners came into my office and told me that they were so concerned about overdevelopment in Wanchees, that housing would come in, it would destroy the area, it would change the character of our village, and could I go down there, because I lived there and my family was there, could I go down there and talk to the people? And again, and I have said before, and I'll say it again, that I said that I would be glad to do it. But humbly, I ask that you let me do it, let me hold the meetings, and we will prepare something that the people want. They live here, and this is what they want. We worked two years on it. They did not have any input at all. I asked them if we could just do it our way, submit it to the planning board for critique and approval. And they did, and there was very few changes, mostly grammatical error there. We had public hearings, they came to Wanchees. And it was just a wonderful experience. And we went road by road, and everybody came in on their road, and they said, "This is what we want." They did not want double housing. They did not want realtors to come down there, buy a piece of property, and then build an accessory use in the backyard and have two rentals. And we were protected. We were the first accessory dwelling room ever created. The state of North Carolina in Raleigh just picked it up in 2016. And so we have a milestone here, and we want you to consider that. And I thank you for listening to us and for your heartfelt concern. I know that you all have been concerned. The planning board has been so concerned, and we're just thankful for that, and we appreciate what you've done and how you've helped us. And we just ask you to do the thing and rescind it from the ordinance, and whatever you send back, that you think carefully about what you're going to allow. And perhaps you could have small cluster units, but have them on 15,000 square feet. You know, there's nothing wrong with that, having the right setbacks, having a play area for the people, have an area for the trash to be protected and shielded. So I just hope that you think about that, because 15,000 square foot is not a big lot for a housing development that people live in. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot.
Angel, be followed by Mitchell Bateman.
Good evening. I'm Angel Corey. I live at 230 Mother Vineyard Road on Roanoke Island on the north end. And in that short stretch from the curve in the road to Scuppernong, there are 12 houses. And in view of the 400-year-old mother vine, there's a piece of property that could be developed under this ordinance to have 24 houses, where currently there are 12 houses. And so I think that you're seeing with what's happened in Wanchees, unfortunately, and Mans Harbor, the results of the way this ordinance is written. And I would ask that you rescind, that you go forward with the planning board's recommendation to remove cluster housing from residential areas. I would encourage you to also consider the fact that if you read the intent statements in the zones on the north end that include multifamily, if you read the intent statement, that's not in there. But at the very least, if you do what the planning board has proposed, it would be a huge improvement. I would also ask that you encourage the planning board, which has done a very good job of being responsive to your suggestions and requests, to act very expeditiously, to rephrase and rewrite the ordinance for cluster zoning where it's going to still be allowed in districts on Roanoke Island, so that they talked at their last meeting about scalability and some type of formula that maybe would keep what's happening in Wanchees from happening in other areas on the north end of Roanoke Island. I'm not here to speak about other areas of the county. I will leave that up to those neighborhoods. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and my friends and neighbors on the north end who have watched with great alarm at what has happened in Wanchees and on the north end. So I would just ask that you vote tonight to pass what the planning board has recommended, and to encourage the planning board to rewrite the zoning for cluster housing as it currently stands. Thank you very much.
Mitchell Bateman will be followed by Britten Shackelford.
Welcome, Mr. Bateman.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, planning staff, Mr. Outen. Thank you for the opportunity to address this group again. I'll be quick. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Bateman for attending our community meeting last night. Kind of a little risky there, sticking your head in a lion's mouth, but anyway, thank you for being there. I'd like to thank Mr. Gillum and his staff for their quick response to the community's request to change the zoning. I'd like to thank this board for moving forward quickly. I look back at the timeline from 2018 until Wanchees was included in zoning. It took about two years to enact cluster home zoning in the village. It's taken two months to get to this point where you tonight can make a decision to remove it. The speed that this is operated under is incredible, and I think you're all to be commended for that. I will just say, I would like for you to remove the cluster home allowance for the village of Wanchees. Thank you.
Britten Shackelford will be followed by Pixie Westcott.
Welcome this evening, Britten.
Britten Shackelford, chairman, members of the board, Bobby, the ladies who are up there busy typing, keeping all of this straight. I would like to thank y'all myself. There have been many instances of things that have pointed out as emotions have run high over this particular issue. It's run emotionally very high with y'all, and it's also run emotionally high with us. And y'all can tell that this is a very important matter to members of a community. That community was witnessed today as we celebrated the life of one of our members. That's the reason many of us are dressed nicer than normal. It's the reason many people are not here. They were just like, you know, we just want to think about missing. We don't want to deal with issues that have been made pretty much for us. As commissioners and as people who serve the public, you have to have a very altruistic attitude. It can't be something that you have something in it for. I was privileged to be the president of the North Carolina Waterman United, and y'all heard from me many times about issues that concerned us. And y'all have always been very amenable to working the best that you possibly can to help us. We have a channel, as you pointed out, Bobby, we have a channel that's maintained now, that we can come and go without worry. We had a huge meeting here one time about using funds from occupancy tax to try to just emergency dredge, just so that we could get to the ocean. And y'all have heard, and y'all have taken part in working for decisions for this county. And I appreciate the fact that how will these decisions impact our children and families? That's a very important part to us, because it is, the community is made up of those And as the president of North Carolina Waterman United, we were tasked with pulling a lot of different oddball people together. Y'all know how fishermen are. It's recreational fishermen, it's large mesh inshore gill net fishermen, it's offshore drop net fishermen, charter boats, recreational boats, longline boats. And the first thing that we did when we, like, because we would hear it, there was an issue, there was a conflict, is we said, "Okay, look, let's pull everybody together." Many times at the community center in Wanchees, and we discussed those issues. Before the state got involved, before the federal government got involved, before anything like that got involved, there would possibly not be an outcome that all of us could live with. And I think that that's important, and it's vital in what y'all are doing here tonight. I appreciate that big public notice that was in the paper. I do feel like it should have been done, you know, when we first started discussing this, so that we didn't get so far down the road that people were just like, "File it. I'm just not voting for any of them. I'm just, you know, I don't care who it is, I'm voting for anybody but them." You know, but that's going to discount the good that y'all have done. And I don't think that that is, I don't think that that is the way that we need to proceed. This meeting here tonight, and the speed in which y'all have encompassed the decisions that were made that deal with our community and other communities in the county, is commendable. And I do appreciate that, and I hope that you do do the right thing. Keep that altruistic attitude, and remember that you're voting for our families and our children. Thank you very much.
Ms. Westcott will be followed by Robin Mann.
Welcome, Ms. Westcott. Thank you. I'm going to go off on a little bit of a tangent, but just roll with me. So I live in Wanchees, Pixie Westcott, on Burris Road. However, I was born and raised in New York. And one of the things about being born and raised in New York was, my mother, Pat, who many of you knew, took us all down to the UN every summer, every summer. She showed us the magic of the UN. She showed us the flags up front representing all the various countries that were working together. And when we went inside, which you could do back in the day, we would go right into the chambers, and you would sit down in a chair and put on a headphone, and you could hit buttons on your armrest that changed the language. And all these people up top are translating, and you just sat there, and you felt so magical, because all these people had come together from all over the world, and they all had their own needs, they all had their own interests, they all had their things that they wanted to work for, some for the people of their country, some for themselves. However, the interchange between them was working together to resolve whatever it was. And I just thought that was awesome, even as a child. All these countries, varying views, varying thoughts, varying opinions, all of them coming together to sit down, talk, respect each other, negotiate in a civil manner, and come to the resolve that would satisfy everybody somewhere in the middle. As a resident of Roanoke Island and a citizen of the village of Wanchees, I'm proud to say I feel the same way tonight. That little pig-tailed girl who was in the UN, she now stands here and says, "The commissioners, our community, we have worked together, we have voiced our opinions, we have put them together. I feel secure that we are going to have a resolve to this tonight. I'm really happy about that. I couldn't be more happy about that." We do have to understand, however, there will always be adversaries who arrive inside a Trojan horse to our island to break in, to make their own decisions on what we should be doing. However, the Wanchees Warriors did this. They had their first meeting March 14th. There was a mere 18-day span from that meeting to the Wanchees Preservation Alliance being registered. 18 days. That was united fundraising, we lawyered up, we incorporated, there were billboards and sign mania everywhere. That all happened in 18 days. However, we will be moving on, and I like the way everything has worked out with us congealing on this, but I also want you to know, the United Nations has nothing on this village, except the size.
Ms. Mann will be followed by Joseph Willis.
Welcome this evening, Robin. Good evening, county commissioners and citizens. I'm Robin Mann along
I'm Robin Mann, a longtime resident and business owner of Mann's Harbor. I've spoken at the last two commissioners' meetings on behalf of and as a member of the 2007 zoning committee. I'm representing them again tonight and many other concerned citizens from Mann's Harbor. Some are here and some could not be here, but we are here in support of our 2007 original zoning ordinance. We would like to also thank you for hearing our plea and allowing this public hearing tonight to address the issue of reinstating our 2007 zoning ordinance. In my last presentations, I shared with you the history of our diligent work and passion for our community-vetted zoning ordinance, MHA and MHB. The toughest part of the zoning process, of course, as we've said, was convincing all those longtime older generations that zoning was going to protect them from the type of housing and businesses that we as the community decided we wanted and to keep our small-town coastal community atmosphere. We feel cluster home developments subverts our intent in the original zoning ordinance as written, vetted, and agreed upon by the residents of our community. Protecting and preserving our natural resources, our traditional ways of life, our delicate estuaries, and our low-lying community which abuts the Croatan Sound has been a priority since 2005 when we successfully advocated against a large proposed soundfront private condominium complex that threatened to replace our marina. Native residents vehemently opposed the high-density housing slated to replace the marina and threatened our livelihoods, so we launched into the zoning process along with the Dare County Planning Department. The end result is a beautiful multi-use public marina successfully shared by commercial and recreational fishermen with two boat ramps for all to enjoy. The marina is heavily used and provides the only quick access for first responders for emergencies in the Croatan Sound and adjoining sounds. Our efforts were celebrated, and the thoughtful low-impact-on-the-land planning approach to zoning was applauded by many North Carolinians. The North Carolina Coastal Federation awarded their Pelican Award to us for our partnership and collaborative efforts. What an honor it was to be recognized for our diligent work and for protecting our community. During the past two meetings, we reminded you that Mann's Harbor lacks the infrastructure to handle high-density cluster housing. Mann's Harbor and Mesus do not have central water or sewer. The added strain on our volunteer fire department, the lack of the water hydrant system and easily accessible water sources throughout our village, coupled with the need for a fully-staffed and trained fire department with proper equipment and adequate first responders is needed now, much less the prospect of adding high-density and increased population. With prevailing northeast and southwest winds, the building of structures too close together is a recipe for disaster, making it highly probable when one home catches on fire, it will be difficult to contain the flames to the loss of just one dwelling. We took all of these aspects into consideration when forecasting and planning our future. Mainland Dare County and Roanoke Island have always been considered the diamond areas and added bonus to the beautiful family-oriented beach areas of Dare County. Tourists enjoy our native history and the varied ecotourism opportunities we offer, like the quiet, less hectic pace for wildlife viewing or a peaceful day spent crabbing and fishing. Over the years, we have witnessed the changes in the beach areas, where the old historic ways were replaced with the new large tightly-built mansions. Historic cottages and wonderful old mom-and-pop hotels that originally drew so many to the Outer Banks have been replaced. We decisively zoned our community in 2007 to avoid the same overdevelopment in our quiet, quaint maritime community. As elected officials, we ask you to get to know the passionate leaders of our community. We invite you to come and spend a evening with us in our community center. It needs attention also. We can talk about our history, our concerns, and how we want to share our community. Please give us back our 2007 zoning ordinance as we vetted it and created it. Our Mann's Harbor zoning committee, the Mann's Harbor Civic Association, and the concerned citizens in Mann's Harbor, thank you for allowing me to talk tonight on their behalf. We ask that you vote tonight to rescind it.
Mr. Willis will be followed by Lynn Davis.
Welcome, Mr. Willis.
Thank you, and thank you all for having us and listening to us. I just have a question, is how did y'all feel to be owned by Brad Alexander at the beginning of last month? He owns y'all. He rolled right over you, just like Barnhill's pavers over on the beach flattening you out. Just, you know, if they don't get what they want, they get their vibratory roller out and pack it down. So that's what I see is going on here. You only have yourselves to blame. You passed an ordinance that was so poorly written that there was nothing that y'all could do. You did it yourselves. Now, it's just like, on the way to work this morning, I saw a possum in the road been run over, vulture there packing him out. The rest of the vultures are sitting there waiting, waiting to get a piece of the action here in Dare County for these cluster homes. So the only thing that seems like that the real estate developers are interested in is the dollar, the almighty dollar. And we all got to have dollars to live, but money ain't everything. And y'all probably know that a cattle has a better chance of passing through the eye of a needle than a rich man has of going to heaven. So think about those things. You say that you're being pressured by the Chamber of Commerce to provide housing for people. Why don't you make it a prerequisite that for any business that builds, anybody that builds a business, they have to build housing to support that business? You know, it's just common sense. You can't keep going and going and going. There's got to be something to support it. They created it. I think they need to help fix it. So why do you need a cluster home ordinance? I don't think we do. Dare County doesn't have the resources, the water, the sewer or septic. People are having trouble with septic systems as it is, the roads to support all this exponential growth that's going on. So please stop it now while you got a chance. Just get rid of it altogether. Don't have it anywhere in Dare County, nowhere. Just forget it. You've already changed zoning lot sizes in Wanchees so you can have more houses. You changed it from 20,000 square feet to 15,000 so you could get more houses. So what I see for that is more money for y'all to spend for whatever you want. You're trying to make Dare County bigger, not better. That's my opinion. So when colonists came here in 1580s, you probably know that Ralph Lane said, "This is the goodliest land under the Copa Heaven." No more. It's over with. It's been ruined. So I don't know why you're trying to do this, but anyway, it's, I'm definitely against it. So you also know that the natives got restless and the white man disappeared, and the natives are restless.
Davis will be followed by Michelle Lewis.
Gentlemen, how y'all doing tonight?
Welcome, Ms. Davis.
I've been listening to everybody in front of me that's been talking, and they speak from their heart. I'm going to speak from my heart right now. My wife and myself moved to Dare County in 1978 when we got married. I was raised down here. I moved away to go to school. When I came back, I brought my bride with me. We've been here ever since. I've been a member of the fire department on Roanoke Island. I've been a member of EMS with Dare County. Fire department right now can't handle the amount of calls there are on Roanoke Island, simple as it is. It's all voluntary service. You can go at any given time and have one, two firefighters for the whole island, where you have to call for Mann's Harbor, Naggs Head to come to assist. Roanoke Island, if we're going to grow like this trying to be done, needs to go to the full-time paid department, and that's millions of dollars. And I understand that. I've been in discussions before, and I've been out of the fire department for a long time. Mr. Willis was engineer with our fire department for a long time. I'd like to see y'all rescind it, go back to what it was originally set up by Ms. Tillitt. It got turned around. I'd like to add y'all put in the Coastal Times this time so we could, everybody saw it. Of course, everybody knew what was going on. But I really do hope you guys rescind it and get it back to like it was, and get it back to the planning board and go from there. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis will be followed by Annie Pettish.
Welcome this evening, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Good evening. I'm Reverend Dr. Michelle Lewis, and I'm the founder and executive director of the Peace Garden Project Pastor at Roanoke Island Presbyterian Church. And in my free time, I teach at Duke University. I live here in Manio. I'm from Manio. My family's been here for generations. Like a number of the people in this room, we can trace our ancestors back to the indigenous people that were here, and I can trace along with, I can also trace my ancestors back to the Freedmen's Colony. And I live not far from R2 on the zoning map, and I urge you to support the planning board's recommendation. I'm concerned about there being a lack of infrastructure to support the proposed growth on Roanoke Island. Roadways through town are already overcrowded. The schools here on Roanoke Island are bursting at the seams. Our community's emergency services are doing their best to keep up, and a growing population means that we also need an assessment of our emergency services here on the island. So not because our emergency services are taxed, I also serve on the town of Manio's police advisory board. I was the chair for the last two years, and I'm currently the vice chair. And our policemen also assist the county sheriff's department, but they're doing everything they can, and they used to kind of get an off-season, but they don't really get an off-season anymore because of the growth that's already taken place. And, you know, the county can't control how many people move into and live in a home after it's built. While I was out campaigning last year when I was running for United States Senate, I knocked on a door of one of the houses on the beach, All Outer Banks tags, they were all local people. There were about 15 people in this house eating breakfast that invited me in, and they all lived in like this three-bedroom house. And so, you know, as we think about planning and what that means, we also have to understand and recognize that once someone buys a house, you can't tell them how many people can live there. If people decide that they want to be 20-deep in a two-bedroom house, that's just what it is. And so we really need to have a plan. I understand there's a need for housing, but cluster home developments without a plan for how the community infrastructure will grow and change with the increased population density is short-sighted and places the well-being of all of us, our families, and the children in our communities at risk. I also strongly encourage the county to have environmental impact assessments conducted before draining and filling any wetlands, and making these mandatory for anyone seeking to build on a wetland or in proximity to wetlands here in the county. Here in North Carolina, more than 70% of the species listed as endangered, threatened, or of special concern depend on wetlands for survival, and here along the coast, wetlands are vital to aquatic species. And in addition to providing habitat for these species, wetlands serve a number of purposes in our communities that include but aren't limited to recharging drinking water sources such as wells and aquifers and adjacent groundwater, groundwaters, reducing the level of contaminants in our groundwater, enhancing and protecting water quality through chemical action by the removal of nutrients and by the retention or removal of sediments or organic matter, and moderating the adverse water quality effects of soil erosion and stormwater runoff. And they also contribute to the protection and improvement of water quality. And our wetlands also serve as shock absorbers during our storms. So that's really important because we do have storms, and as the climate continues to change, I know some people don't believe climate change is real, but y'all, we can see the weather patterns changing, and as this happens and we have more storms, we're really going to need our wetlands to make sure that we're not flooded out all the time here on the island. And I'm sure there are environmental students in programs, when I talk about environmental impact assessments and them being done by impartial third parties, we could look to schools to help us with this so that we're not spending tons of money to do it. Nicholas School of the Environment at Duke, maybe UNC Wilmington, North Carolina State, UNC Chapel Hill. I also sit on the board at Yale School of the Environment and would be willing to help make those connections with them if that was a route that was decided upon to get this done. And, you know, I want to, many of the people in this room won't still be here in 20 years, you know, when we look around, and that's just the reality of, when we look at life cycles. But the children in our community will be here. The children will be here. Some of you have grandchildren, they'll still be here in the community, and we have a responsibility to make sure that families are cared for and the environment is cared for as well. Thank you.
Mr. Pettish will be followed by Sandy Barreel.
Welcome, Ms. Pettish. Good evening, Chairman Woodard and members of the Board of Commissioners. It's an honor to appear before you again. My name is Andy Pettish of Pettish Law in Raleigh, North Carolina. I've been practicing land use and zoning for approximately 17 years now, and I would not deign to come here and talk to folks in Dare County or Wanchees about what's right for their community. Y'all know far better than I do, but what I do have is some expertise in zoning and land use, and so I want to comment on that in my time that I have before you. And if I may approach and hand up. This is just an excerpt of the cluster home development standards that are from the Dare County zoning ordinance on the first page. And then on the following page, I have an excerpt from Professor David Owens, Land Use Law in North Carolina, Third Edition, the most recent edition, that addresses special use permit standards. And I want to note, maybe helpful, that I have been here for all the meetings, the special use permit meetings, but I did not participate. I spent a lot of time speaking with the leadership of the Wanchees Preservation Alliance about my analysis, and it was that the standards within the special use permit, within your ordinance, were objective. They're ministerial. And what the case law says, what the courts have said in North Carolina, is that if an applicant in a special use permit application puts on competent material substantial evidence in support of those criteria, and there is no evidence contra, then that permit must be issued. And that's really what we faced here, was that there was no, when the standard says that houses have to be 15 feet apart, and you have a sealed set of plans that shows those structures being 15 feet apart, there is no evidence contra that can come in that could be a basis for denial. And so there, it would have been a waste of a lot of folks' resources for me to try and prepare for and bring in experts and discuss this when, at the end of the day, this, even if I were, and I don't think I'm even this good, able to persuade the board against these very clear criteria in approving this, this would have been one of the most likely to be reversed decisions on appeal that I would have come across in 17 years of practice. So the focus has been on looking forward and looking at the text amendment, and I, along with many of the people, as they've expressed, appreciate the speed at which this board and staff, Mr. Gillum, have brought this text amendment to you. And so, again, on the second page, there's four criteria for the general standards that are included in special use permits across North Carolina. And one of those is that it's in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. And I've reviewed the comprehensive plan, I believe, still. And I've reviewed the comprehensive plan, I believe, still operating on the 2009 land use plan, and there would have been, as the Reverend Doctor before me spoke, and many others have alluded to, the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, would have been such a valuable tool to be, for this board, whether you approved it or not, for this board to be able to have relied upon, and for the opposition to be able to have spoken to and brought in evidence with respect to the density, the scale, infrastructure, environmental impacts, et cetera, because they're all addressed in here. And so, in closing, I want to respectfully urge you to pass this text amendment before you tonight, and one of the reasons is that urgency is that in North Carolina, there's a law called Permit Choice, which means that anybody that came in with a complete cluster home development application today, or at any point prior to you passing this, would have the right to proceed under the old rules. So, it is of, time is of the essence with respect to passing this, and I thank you so much for your attention to this and your patience throughout this entire process. Thank you.
Mr. Barrell will be followed by Will Brooks.
Hi. My name is Sandra Barrell. Thank you for your time. First, I want to thank, would like to thank the planning board for listening to our concerns and sending the cluster home ordinance back to you all for a public hearing to rescind it out of unincorporated Dare County. I would also like to ask the Board of Commissioners to see that the notification process be changed. I see the past notice for this public hearing was a half-page in the Coastal Times, and it was also advertised on local radio stations. This was excellent, and I only wish it would have been done in 2018, when the zoning was changed. If it had, we all would not be here in this mess today. I think it would be a good idea if you posted signs in the community when there are changes to the zoning ordinance, like the town of Naggs Head does. I ask that this board rescind the cluster home ordinance, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Brooks will be followed by Ralph Barrell.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Board. Just thank you for all of our staff that's here, whether it's concerning this council, the planning board, anyone else. I live in Wanchees. I would like to see the ordinance rescinded for the cluster homes, but I just, my primary reason for wanting to stand up here is just to ask if I can say another prayer for y'all because I don't want to forget that we, as believers and we as a people, need to continue to pray for our government on any front, because God says if we want peace, that we need to pray for our government, and I believe that we all would like to have peace as we go about our day, and actually work together, and y'all have done a great job, I believe, in that regard, and I'm actually really thankful for living in Wanchees and the fact that we've kept our cool for the most part the way that we have. So, I just, is it okay if I say a quick prayer for y'all?
Absolutely.
All right. Father God, I just thank you so much for this day. I thank you for being a daddy. I thank you for being the lover of our souls, for being our creator. I thank you for, God, I just thank you for Wanchees, for Dare County. I thank you for the people. God, I just thank you for your hearts, for your people, God, whether it be on this board, whether it be the people that just live in the community. Lord, we all play a part. You knit us together in our mother's wombs, and you have designed us to be exactly as you created us. So, Father, I just pray that our hearts are continually poured out into you, God, as you pour into us, and I pray, Lord, for our government, Lord, our local government tonight, and I just bless them, God, that you would continue to just rein your wisdom upon them, God, that you would bless them in every manner and every aspect of their life, God, that you would just give them the strongest convictions for any decision that you would have made, and, Lord, I just pray that your grace remain upon them, and that, God, just we as a people would continue to honor them as our government, Lord, that we would stand up and fight as necessary, God, but we would just do it in a manner that you would have us do it. So, Lord, I just thank you for their blessing over us, Lord. I just thank you for their hearts this evening, and, God, we just continue to just bless them, just bless this community, bless this county, God, and first and foremost, I actually pray that we will learn to bless you in what we do. So, God, teach us to bless you in all that we do, God, and teach our government continually to bless you in their hearts and their decisions. So, Lord, we just give you all thanks, all glory, and all praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Barrell will be followed by Craig Parker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm not going to speak very long tonight. I think you've heard the communities loud and clear, and it's just not, you know, going through this whole process, it's really not just the unincorporated Dare County that is talking about all this development. You hear from the beach communities, too. I guess the biggest thing that has been talked about is the 14 houses going up in Kill Other Hills beside the 60 that had been proposed for Wanchees. So, I thank you for the speed that this all came about. I know how the wheels of government kind of grind pretty slow, and this was, went very quickly. So, I thank you for that, and I hope that we can get through this, and it's, for me, it's just time to vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parker will be followed by Connie Bateman.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Thank y'all for allowing us to be here again tonight. You know, it's just when Ralph's sitting there talking, I was getting, kind of thinking that there's 10 acres of property, you put 60 houses on it. If those 60 houses are containing 30% of that property, you got 60 houses on three acres of property. Let that sink in. That's terrible. I know we have a housing need in Dare County, but I don't think this is the way of going about and doing it, you know. We keep trying to figure out how to get more people to come down so that we can make more money, that our businesses prosper, and in the long run, this is what we're paying for. We grew too fast for our own pants. So, now we're wearing short-legged pants, and we don't know what to do. So, we turn to y'all, and I think y'all, too, have been caught with your short-legged pants and didn't intend to be that way, and I'm sorry that it did happen that way, but I know now we can, maybe we're going to have to let this guy build these, maybe we won't, but maybe nobody else will get a chance to do this again in any other parts of this county. You know, the three main townships over on the beach, no offense to anybody, but that's like three fat boys that ate all their candy, and now they want to come over here and eat ours. They had no more space to do anything with because they want to hold on to what space they have, that they can put in these gigantic houses and businesses and whatever else, and not leave any of it for housing for those employees. I know several of the restaurants have houses for their employees, and that's, I guess that's what they had to do, to have people to work their business. You ride all up and down that beach, and everybody's got a for-hire sign. Man here in Manio is trying to hire somebody to wash boats and cut grass for $15 an hour outside in the sunshine, whereas Dunkin' Donuts across the street will give you $14 an hour just handing coffee out of a window. You know, so, I know we need houses, and everybody needs employees, but I don't think these cluster homes are going to be the answer to that. I don't have an answer, and it may be over in Columbia to build housing over in there. You know, you go to a lot of these bigger beaches, Virginia Beach, their homes are all along the beach, they're inland, but their beaches are so crowded in the summertime, you can't find a place to put a towel if you don't get out there early, and that's what we're becoming. I can remember when I was a little boy and they first built the bypass. The only two things I remember being on that bypass was the circus tent, and somebody had a little go-kart track in the sand dunes. Other than that, there was nothing else there. Now, look at it. That was a two-lane road. Now, it's four-lane. There was no traffic on that road. I know none of us have the answer tonight, but hopefully we won't have to be here to go through this again, and I just hope that y'all will rescind this thing so that it can never happen again. And if there's any way, whether it was with you or with the planning board, if Mr. Brad has to come back to the fountain for changes, I hope whatever the changes he comes back for will be a reason to say, no, can't do that.
Kami Daniels will follow, Ms. Bateman.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Connie Bateman, and I live in Wanchees, and I'm here tonight because I have grandchildren that I love very much, and I'm hoping I won't cry because I do love them that much. And when I see what can happen with cluster housing if this continues, they will not have a safe place to play with all the cars, the traffic, everything that's entailed that everybody has spoken before, and I just ask that you please remove the text of cluster housing for Wanchees, and let's just keep it simple the way life has always been. Thank you so very much.
Ms. Daniels will be followed by Ken Mann.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Connie Bateman's sister, and I support everything that she said about Wanchees. Well, anyway, I left Wanchees 34 years ago because of the family business, not that I wanted to, it was very traumatic for me. I lived in Virginia, and right now I still live in Virginia, but I'm planning to move back in a couple of years. Wanchees is very special to me, and like I said, my husband, he had many brothers and sisters there, and are just, I mean, it's just been a wonderful place. I refer to it in Virginia as God's country. I'm going to go back to God's country. Everybody knew that I meant, it meant Wanchees. But I'm just asking, please, please, think about what this is going to do to Wanchees, change the fabric of it, and I just appreciate y'all thinking about, very hard about this, making the right decision. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mann will be followed by Rex Mann.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll only speak for just a moment. You've heard so much already today and over the past few weeks. First, I would lend my voice to the others that have asked you to vote for the zoning text amendment as recommended by the planning board. Second, I would encourage you, as you go forward, to move very slowly. We all know, some of you have said yourself you had no idea what would happen, and there's probably some unforeseen things in our future as well. Maybe it would be good to just move slowly. There's a couple of projects out there. See what happens to them. See what's good, see what's wrong, and let us move forward with more knowledge and understanding. And last, I would say that I think that the efforts were put forth to hopefully maybe bring some relief to the housing situation. It's been around a long time, and I know you guys are working on stuff right now, and I would say that if I can be of help to you, I would lend my services and my time, because I believe it's a problem that is all of ours, not just the folks in Naggs Head or Kill Other Hills or Wanchees. We've all benefited from traveling tourism to one degree or another, and now we're all suffering from it to some degree or another. So, I think the solution needs to come from all of us, and I firmly believe there are solutions, and I'll just leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Rex Mann will be followed by Laurie Tillot.
Welcome this evening, Rex. My name's Rex Mann. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Rex.
Yes, sir. It's been a learning experience for all of us. I don't think any of us knew where it would go. A little bit about growth, I've seen growth in my own business, and I had a gentleman that was driving from Virginia for about a year to try to find a place to live, so I understand that, and he drove from Elizabeth City, and he finally found a place in Stumpy Point that he could afford to live in, which is close enough to Wanchees. But as I grew in business, I purchased more trucks and another shop, and one afternoon, I took a trip to Virginia, and I looked around, and I said, you know, I think this is enough. I'm happy now, and if we don't get a grip on things, it's like when my mind saw those cars in Virginia like a bunch of busy bees. Too much opportunity. Well, there's enough opportunity, but not controlling what we have, then it's not a special place anymore. I guess we're the first place that man flew, right? So, it needs to be a nice place to get through. You don't need to be in traffic for two hours from Naggs Head to Kitty Hawk. So, we've got to get control of the growth. The housing thing has been going on a long time, but how much do we actually want? And can we actually solve the problem? Will you ever solve the problem? So, you just get it back the way it was, and then we try to work together. I learned a lot through this. I think you guys learned a lot through it, and try to have vision as we move forward to keep from ever getting ourselves backed into a corner like this again. And being humble is a big, big part of it, too. I was a little angry at times and felt like you, Bob, were, you know, not on our side, a little humble, not, that's a cheap price, I'd like to have one, things like that. That didn't help us. You heard the public comments. That just made the fire rage, you know? So, I know that you put as many conditions as you could, but we know that in the future, vision and strict standards and keeping that property so that when you ride into whatever village, whatever town, that it looks the way it has for years and not like Virginia. That's what we want. So, let's change her back, please.
Ms. Tillot will be followed by Justin Bateman.
Good evening again, Laurie Tillot from Wanchees. I want to thank y'all for the opportunity. I want to thank NOA and the planning board for all they've done and all the meetings, the special meetings, and y'all expediting this. It means the world to all of us out here, and I'm sure y'all know that, and we would really like to ask that you rescind this ordinance and these changes that have been done, and not just for Wanchees, but all of unincorporated Dare County. This is not right for Dare County. I had the pleasure of having to be in Elizabeth City today and drive back down that beach. It's not even Memorial Weekend, and let me tell you, it took a long time, and the traffic is horrendous. We've just got to figure out a way to control our growth, not against growth. We all have property. We all want to sell what we have at some point or save it for our kids, but thank y'all for listening to us, expediting this, and I'm just asking you to take it away, and we'll be involved as a community to help find answers for the housing that we need. We understand there's a need, and if we all work together, I think we can find an answer. And we all make mistakes, and this was a mistake, we feel like, but we can all correct our mistakes and move forward, and thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Bateman will be followed by Mikey Daniels.
Welcome, Mr. Bateman.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank y'all again for the opportunity to come up here and speak again. So, I want to start by apologizing. Last time I was here, I was a bit brash, you know, kind of fired off some shots at some of y'all, and I kind of spooked just out of, off the top of my head, and, you know, I'd said when I was, in the last time I was here that I wanted to, I didn't want to upset my mama. Well, I asked her when I was done, I said, Mama, how would I do? She goes, well, you probably shouldn't have said this, and you probably, I was like, all right, Mama, all right. So, I want to apologize for just really firing off at y'all, kind of unfairly. There's a lot of things that y'all do behind the scenes that we don't see that, and it all kind of all works together. So, I just want to firstly apologize. Secondly, want to thank y'all for really moving forward with this process, these hearings, this, I mean, yeah, the cluster home ordinance being put in place or whatnot, came about, you know, over a couple of years, but, you know, just trying know, over a couple of years, but, you know, just trying to really listen to us and respond to us this fast in a couple of months has been incredible. So thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to come up here and speak in favor of having the text amendment removed for the cluster homes. I mean, as you can see, we're, we're some pretty proud people. You know what I mean? We got T-shirts all in here for Wanchees. I don't see anybody that's got like a Straight Outta Southern Shore shirt walking around. Y'all see Straight Outta Kitty Hawk? I kid, I kid. But I mean, we're some proud people and a lot of unincorporated dare feels the same way. And a lot of unincorporated dare does not want to have this ordinance in place anymore either. I have an idea, though, and I kind of came in late, so this may have been floated, it may not have been. I want to say it was about three years ago. Manio High School was going through some stuff where they were trying to, a group of people was trying to get the Redskins removed from, you remember that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so when it came time to vote, and y'all might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, and this is kind of how I remember it, though. When it came time to vote on it with the Board of Education, they, I believe it was unanimous to keep it the same. Keep Mania Redskins, the Mania Redskins. And I believe that they put it to bed and they put it to bed for good, that it was not to ever be brought up again. Could that happen now? Could this text amendment be removed and never to be brought up and put back in place again? Is that something possible? Because if so, I think a lot of us would really appreciate it, okay? So that's just something I was thinking about on my way here, running in late, and I didn't know if it had been brought up because I missed some of the comments early on, but if that is something that can be done, we'd really like it if y'all would consider it. Thank you so much.
Mikey, welcome.
Thanks. Glad to be here, but, you know, we've come a long ways and I thank you for what you're doing here, but it's been, I've been always thought that way. I've kind of a little aggravated one night here. I got up and left because it's getting on my nerves. It don't take much, you know? But, you know, I sit in here and listen, you know, that's why I like to be the last one. You know, y'all got a lot of things here. We were all on a different, everybody's had a different idea. We want to do this and do that, you know? What is the vision? What is your vision for Wanchees? What are we supposed to do? You know, we're, the fishermen are almost run out of business because of water quality. And you know, we need to do, deal with that. I've called for, I guess 15 calls today. Nobody will even call you and talk to you about the coastal waters out there. What is going on? You know, and another thing that I've been thinking about is, you know, what, what we can do, the people in here in Wanchees, we could get us a little boats and we could go to this harbor and start cleaning up some of this junk we got around there. And my daddy, he loved it. He said, one man's junk's another man's treasure. And he didn't buy nothing new because it was all junk. But we made it, you know? And so, but, you know, what we need to do is, what is going on here? We don't, we don't want to fight back like this again. We need to have a plan of what we want and what's going on here. And that's what I, you know, what I'm going to do, and I appreciate the guy's prayer there, and I'm sorry that, you know, I prayed for y'all not to sleep, but I think I'm the only one that didn't sleep. So, you know, and I'm seeing everybody laughing. See, that makes it better. We don't need to be fighting, fussing. Fighting, fussing don't get you very far, you know?
Well, Mikey, I just want to tell you, the Lord answers prayers.
I've been getting up to it. You better be careful what you ask for, huh? But, you know, it's, you know, we're all good people. We, it don't take much to get us going, you know? And it's like, you know, you know, I'm thinking about the fishermen now. You know, we, we talk, you know, with the fishermen and say, what, how are you fishing? What are you doing? What's going on? You know what they're saying? We're hiding more than we're bringing in. You see what's happening? That ain't no way for a family feller to make his living there, to do that there, to put them in coolers. Is that fair? Is that the right thing to do? No, it's not the right thing. We need to do what's right. And so by there, if we can get some water quality, better water quality coming in our sounds and in our creeks and rivers, and, you know, and I think we need to volunteer again for some of these people here, me and Mr., we don't do nothing, so. So we can, you know, we need to clean up. And then we need to take our part. It needs to be fixed. Okay, well, thank you. And there's one other thing I know, I don't want to say nothing negative, but I hear rumors that a lot of money for the beach nursing. I'm not going to say about it, but, you know, that's a, that's a problem, too, you know? And I, I don't know if I told all of you there, I'll tell you one day. I went down to the, looked at the, the bridge just south of Rhode Anthony. I walked underneath there, there is, there's no dune there. I walked clean to the ocean by myself, walked clean back to the marsh. We got a dredge boat now, we say, why don't, you know, sand is a very important thing for Dare County. And so we be able to need to get it and get it back. And so we could dig it out. They tell me right now that the, that the ocean is 10 inches higher than the water in the sound. So you see what's happening? You, we've got the beach over there, 18-foot dunes. How is any water going to get in back and forth? It ain't. You see what's happened? That ain't where the dunes were. The dunes were, they made them. They're man-made. And there's, and you're, you're one group, but there's, there's got to be ways to be thinking of how can we can do it to make it better. That's what, you know, and I want to, I want to help, I want to help to do something. I want to, I want to volunteer, you know? You know, who can we go tell these other people? We know where this trash is at, but we need to go pick it up, clean it up and put it in the dumpster where it needs to go. Thank you very much. God bless you. Have a great day.
State your name, please.
Donna Maderas.
Welcome, Ms. McGee.
I thank you, all of you, Commissioner and all you guys and girls. I moved here in 88. I lived in Massachusetts. That's where my family was born. And I was with a family camping there because where we lived, which what you call cluster homes, was projects. And we used to lock up the house and go for the summer camping up in Cape Cod so my children would be safe. I had my son Bradley, I don't know if anybody knows my Bradley English, he was very well-known in the area, and he was schizophrenic and childlike. I used to never let my children out of the house unless I went with them. I've had my children come home and tell me about how they saw things that were horrible. I took my kids camping all summer and then we came back for school. And they went to school and then we did the same thing every year. And I met the Saunders family and one year they could not come. So we decided we were coming here. That was in July of 88. I spent the best two weeks of my life here in Wanchees. My kids went out the door, up the road, and they came back in top condition. Especially my Bradley. He was a target for anybody. He was a target. Now, we've had our criminal stuff down here, yes, but not many people get away with it down here. But I have not had it in my front yard. We have lived here all these years. I don't think I've been home but five times and I kissed the ground the moment I came back. And it usually was for funerals, so that wasn't a very good idea, you know? But I have had a family here. I would not have survived my life not living here in Wanchees. And I've been here with such beautiful people. I have never seen it. I lost my husband 23 years ago. My sister thought I'd come back. I said, no, this is my family. They helped me through that. My Bradley passed away in June last year, and I could not have done it. He was safe here. He was safe. And projects, which is what you call cluster homes, are not safe. People, I don't care how educated you are, once you pile them together, things change. They change. They get crazy, they rob, they steal, they murder. I don't want to see my home where I can't go out. I don't even have to lock my doors. I've never had any issues with anybody. We've had our problems. We're not angels here. We've had criminal stuff and all. Usually it's crazy people that come from up north. But this, this community has been, Dare County has been a blessing. This is a piece of heaven. I've had, been blessed to have a piece of heaven before. Hopefully I have the true heaven with the Lord. God bless all of you. And I pray you make the right choice, and I'm, I'm talking for all children. I've been a nurse for 40 years. For all children to be safe. I have grandchildren here. I have my oldest, my, my three boys, kids left that live here. They don't even want to go anywhere else. This is home. And I'm thanked, I thank God every day. I've told people I thank God every day for the blessing of finding this place. Thank you very much. God bless all of you.
If you'd state your name, please.
Chris Carey. 44 Ormond's Way, 27981.
Welcome, Mr. Gary.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here this evening, folks. I, okay. Perhaps I, I'm from Ohio. I moved here in November of 21. And between then and when my, my bill, my occupancy permit was approved in December of this past year, I had three different zip codes. So I moved a lot and I under, I have lived through the housing shortage, the seasonal housing thing. I've done, I've been through that. You know, there's a saying that our own experience is our greatest asset, and I'm not going to take, drag you all through the whole story, but it started out in Morrison Grove. And through, you know, and I was lucky enough to live there because the actors and actresses that do Lost Colony weren't there, and so we were able to stay there for, for some time until we had to leave in April. And then there was nowhere to go. So, but, long story short, we finally moved into Old Warf Estates. Thank you, Noah, for getting that approved, or whatever role you had in that and giving us a home. And you know what? Like, it was a real learning experience, you know? It really was. And, and I can see why this is so important. Like, I really want to take a moment to, you know, to thank you all for evaluating this Section 2231.1. By our meeting here and being, you know, everyone being present at this, you know, it's, it's plainly obvious that we're all aware of the immediate impact of the cluster home developments and what they're going to do to have the quality of life in Dare County. I mean, I moved here to backfill an engineering job for somebody who retired. They couldn't find anyone local, so, so that's why my wife and I moved down here. And like I said, but I'm not going to live in the past. Let's, let's, let's move on. So you might thank me for this, but like, I, I'm part of the Wanchees Preservation Alliance. I'm working on their website, doing some of the social engagement. And I ran an ad about this meeting. And I was like, try to keep it neutral, you know? I was like, come out, say your piece, you know, join in, be part of the civic engagement and like, don't learn about civics in high school, just show up and learn it in, in person. And I was amazed. It was like 75 or 80 people who were either liking it or having a conversation about it. And you know what the main thing, the majority, I'd say maybe about 65% was hopelessness, a little anger, a little stereotyping. You know, there was some encouragement that to keep, keep things up, but, but it was just a kind of a sour mood online, you know? And that kind of, I was like, gosh, you know, like, is it that hopeless? Like, we're all smart, we got a lot of smart people in here, you know? And, and like, this can't be figured out in one way, shape or form, you know? And so, like, you know, let me, let me speed this up here, you know? Like, I, I know that you all are doing your best and that you're adding heavy, heavy weight to our, our concerns. I mean, even Mr. Bateman came down to visit us at the community center last night and he explained things to us. And I, I came away from that much more educated and understanding about the process, you know? And I, I am getting tired of hearing phrases like, it's a done deal, or sorry about your luck, or oops, we didn't think about that, or we didn't, you know, we didn't think that would happen. All, all, I don't think they apply to this situation anymore and they don't have to going forward. So in closing, I would like to ask that you completely rescind Section 2231.1 ordinance as a special use for Wanchees and all incorporated Dare County. It's obvious to me that the standards and provision contained within that were not properly planned, engineered and vetted because the ordinance, to me, essentially indicates a one-size-fits-all on parcel sizes, no matter what the previous and surrounding zoning, hydrology or associated infrastructure exists. Second, I would request to consider hiring a county engineer position. I don't, I know Currituck has one. I don't know what they do, but they're in the Public Works Department. To have oversight at approving large-scale housing projects such as this, I mean, I really don't think the burden of appropriateness or development should be on local residents. You know, a professional engineer. Oh, boy. Okay, well, I'll pass, but thank you.
Come up and state your name, please.
Gentlemen, ladies, my name is Michael Egan. I've lived in this county for 30 years, raised all of my five children in this county. They've been through all the schools, got a wonderful education, and I've stood at this podium every year in those 30 years to dwell and call upon us to save the environment. Today, we're talking about cluster housing. My pet peeve all these years was protect the trees, and I'm here tonight once again to speak for the trees because the trees can't speak for themselves. They can speak to each other, but they can't speak to us. So I am here to tell you that these islands are only here because of the trees. It's sand out there, and if you drive up and down this coast, you'll see that sand being blown across and those dunes are disappearing. But if there's trees, the trees hold the sand in place. And not only that, but the trees reduce the threat of hurricane winds. That's what forests are about. The wind comes through the forest, but the trees spread the wind out, the power of the... Now, this may seem silly to some people, but I've seen this all my life on these islands. In fact, I built a house in Dare County, but I also planted trees. The more trees we cut down, the sooner these dunes are going to disappear on these islands. So I implore you, because of this cluster housing, it's clear-cutting. We've all seen what these neighborhoods become. It's clear-cutting and many times the trees are not replaced. So I implore you to consider this... this operation of cluster housing because so many, we're going to lose so many trees by clearing these landscapes to fit all these homes in. Thank you for considering this matter.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Amy Stone. I live on Burrows Road in Wanchees. First off, I want to thank you all for your flexibility in adjusting the meeting times so more of us working people from Wanchees could attend. It really means a lot to us. And also, how quickly you have moved the process. So we have reached this point where we are tonight, that we're on the verge of a vote. And I do strongly urge you to remove the text, the cluster home text, not just for Wanchees, but the rest of the county. Brad Alexander has made public comments that if, once he gets all his permits approved for this project, he is going to build projects like this all over the county. And I don't think that is what the county wants or needs. You, as Board of Commissioners, have a very heavy responsibility. And you need to determine what is the saturation point for development in Dare County and develop a plan to enforce that, to enforce the line in the sand. Because we are approaching that point rapidly. We have had earlier beach closures due to contaminated water than ever before, and we have had more of them. People come here to the beach. If the beaches are closed because of fecal contamination, they're not going to come back. So we're kind of killing the goose that laid the golden egg. So I, again, just implore you all to rescind the ordinance, but to also be very diligent and thoughtful, take comments from the community because we must get a development plan so we do not destroy what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Rose Marie.
Thank you. Good evening, Rose Marie Dosher. I'm a resident of East Lake, North Carolina, and very proud of it. And I just want to speak to the people of Wanchees and thank them for including the other unincorporated towns. We're, we're not as large as you are. You have a larger population. Anything we can do to help, we'd love to. But yes, this is a serious problem, and it needs to be addressed. And I'm glad that we're going to be included in any decisions made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight? Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Denise Davis. I live on Old Warf Road in Brinkley, connecting. I just want to say before you guys tonight, I'm not a good speaker, but I'm going to tell you from the heart. We moved into our house in 1978. I worked real hard. I've got one of the older homes in Wanchees. I traced it back with Dottie Fry. It was built in 1915. I'm proud of it. I've worked two hands. Lynn and I decided we wanted to buy the lot down the road. There again, we worked hard. Dumpster after dumpster after dumpster. Thank God for Jonathan and the purple dinosaur. We picked up many a piece of junk. Decided again, we'd buy another lot. Bought the one behind us. There again, we cleaned up. Asked for help, got none from the county. I feel like I've worked and worked and worked. Got it now, looking pretty decent. Picked up a many a piece of junk. How many a dollar been spent? How many a hour of my hard labor? Asked no help, got no help. That's the way I feel. Now you're going to put this beside me, which is the road, is where your desks are, where I'm standing now. You're going to build this on top of what I have done. I feel like I'm being defeated. Thank you.
Other public comments tonight? Anyone else like to speak before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, we close the public hearing.
Thank you, County Manager.
That brings us to, uh, bear with me just a minute. We're still on, uh, item two. And it's a proposal before you this evening, Board, to, um, find a draft, to act on the proposed amendment. We could choose to make revisions to the draft amendment based on the public input of board discussions. We may choose to take no action. So I would yield to the Board and ask, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the draft amendment, Section 22, 22 dash 31 dash 1, the Dare County zoning ordinance, to remove the 22 zoning districts listed in the statement of consistency, reasonableness, by adopted as proposed. The statement of consistency and the reasonableness has been prepared by the staff, is adopted as part of this motion.
Second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. And it's been seconded by Commissioner House. The floor is now open for further discussion, if the Board has any.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to, to that motion, if, if this is the right way to do this, to ask the planning board to, as several of the folks mentioned here this evening, to go back as, as part of, um, this rescinding of the cluster home text amendment from the, the 22 zoning districts that were mentioned. But to basically go back and look at, uh, cluster home, we'll call it that, or, or whatever, but to redefine what Dare County wants a, a higher density development to, to look like. And that may not be, should be part of this motion, or it could be part of this motion. But I'll yield to the County Manager, County Attorney, to clean that up for me.
My suggestion would be to act on this motion, and then if you want to make a motion.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That effect. Timo can do. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
The planning board is still looking at revisions to the remaining districts based off of the decision tonight that would remain. That's still scheduled to happen. It's on the agenda for the June meeting for any potential changes to the districts that will remain based off of tonight's decision.
Okay, don't need it then. Thank you, Noah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I have comments, but after the very.
Well, I, I'm, I'm going to have some comments before the vote.
Okay, Mark.
Because I'm going to support that motion. But what I'd like to say is personally, those who have known me for a number of years, I moved, I've been down here since 1968, long time. Folks, I remember the two lanes on the beach road. None but sand dunes over there on the beach area. I've learned a valuable lesson. Even though we maybe have legally made the announcement back in 2018, some eight notices, I think moving forward, anytime we have anything of this gravity, we need to put the big article in the paper. We also need to put the notices on the side of the highway. So. So I will make that motion at another meeting moving forward. But I, I think that's important that we do that. My perspective back in 18, and I, there might be some controversy here, and I hope it's not, but maybe it's my being naive. And I would probably, I will, I'll admit to that, is that I just presumed that the notices that we sent out, folks looked at them and listened to them and, and made note of them. Well, maybe that's my being naive. So that's why I'm going to make the recommendations that, that I make. We did this for all of unincorporated Dare. And I think I speak for each of my fellow commissioners. As a matter of fact, they have said this at prior meetings. If we'd have known that this would have been this controversial, we would have never, under any circumstances, moved forward with what we did. That's unfortunate. And hopefully, that will never happen again. Mr. Bateman, I wish we could make that motion that this would never come up again. But I don't think we're legally able to do that for future boards. But well, the suggestion well taken. Brent, I mean this in every respectful way that I humanly possibly can say this to you because I did the same. You married up. Your wife.
Testament to the fact that love is blind.
That's right. That's right. I respect her professionalism, her comments, and the way she handled herself and the way she spoke to us. And I prefaced saying that you married up because I did the same. That's why I prefaced that. So I hope you take it positively. Mikey Daniels? I said it when you spoke. Lord answers prayers. Last, the last 30, last 30, 45 days, I've had some sleepless nights. I want to, this is, if people who know me, I served 14 years in Dare, in Kill Devil Hills on the Board, and I'm in my 10th, 11th year here. I'm a very humble person. People who know me know that. I was out of character two, two meetings ago. And I apologize, and I hope you folks will accept my apology. Folks, this, this Board, we want everything humanly possible right for our citizens of Dare County. We spend many, many countless hours. And I, and I, Mikey can attest to this. He sat in one of the, he sat in this very seat. That we try to do what's right for our citizens. We take it very, very seriously when we say, "How will these decisions impact our children and our families, caring for our community, a nurturing place where all can live and grow?" Please understand, we work very, very hard for you. I want to thank you all for, for, for the kind words that you've all said this evening. And Ken, I'm going to take you up. We need your help. We've grown, folks. No question about it. This county has grown tremendously, and we've got to find a way to make it work for all of us. I don't have all the answers. My fellow commissioners don't have all the answers. But I can assure you, we will listen to you. And as long as I sit in this seat, if I have to come personally and sit at the citizens' kitchen table over an issue that might affect them, I'll do it. We should. We should never let this happen again. Thank you all for your time. Those in favor of this motion, unless any of my fellow commissioners have anything else to say, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like some? Motion carried unanimously. Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item three on the agenda. And that's the County of Dare Human Resources Personnel Manual. One of the last budgets, we included dollars in the budget to have a consulting group come in and revise and update our Personnel Manual. That process took a year roughly. And they worked hard with our HR department to take what we got, bring it up to sort of moderate standards. For the most part, the Personnel Manual is the same in terms of what it does and what it's intended to do. Doesn't change a lot. It changes some stuff on the way that it's, it's said. It talks about, you know, changes that we have to make to, to do. I'm looking for my sheet here. Change sheet. You got that? And, here we go.
Here it is.
Okay, okay. You know, we took the definitions and condensed them and made them modern. We went through some of the, sort of the principles behind it. We've had this vetted by HR department. We've also had it vetted by our department heads to get their input. And as we go through it, there's, you know, not a lot of things that are different. We've updated the salary plan and the salary structure to do what we just did with flex scheduling and to implement our salary plan and all that. Over the last few budgets, we've changed our holiday leave and our administrative leave. If you recall, we had some long discussions in some of our workshops about that. And we, we've updated all that and gotten it into our, our Personnel Manual. A couple of things are different, or at least we're proposing to be different and need to, you're, make sure you're on board with that. One of those is our retiree health for disability payments. The way our system is set up today is if I come in and I work with you, and I'm here three years, and I become disabled, then immediately, I'm allowed to get retirement benefits as if I worked 30 years. And I'm also allowed to have lifetime health benefits paid for by the county just as an employee who worked 20 years would have. And we're proposing to change that. We're proposing to change that. And Elizabeth, you correct me if I say this wrong, to where the retiree health for disability, if you haven't vested in the, in the health plan, if you haven't gotten your 20 years in at the time of your disability, then you don't get health plans for life should you become disabled while you work for Dare County. Is that correct?
We changed it to 30 years.
30 years. We changed that to 30 years. And that, that was the second thing, is that in order to vest in the, in the county health plan for life, you have to have 30 years of service and not 20. And that would be applicable to employees who start after the date of adoption of this. So it wouldn't be retroactive to any of our current employees. But as we bring in new people, that's what it would apply to. And over time, it would reduce a lot of the retiree health benefits that we're paying for people, one, that worked 20 years, or two, that became disabled, that we wouldn't have to continue to pay and continue to put impacts on our healthcare costs. That's probably the, the biggest change in, in the Personnel Manual. The other thing is, there's a, the grievance procedure's been just streamlined. We used to have a process where you had a hearing before other peers, and then it went to HR, and then it went to me. And we've kind of just streamlined that to say, if you've got a grievance, you take it to HR. If you don't like the decision, it's made to HR. You bring it to the County Manager. Don't like the County Manager's decision, then you have the right to bring it to the courts. And it just makes the process move, and it winds up with the County Manager anyway. And so this streamlines it for the staff. So Elizabeth, are they, others that are big-ticket changes we need to point out?
We are proposing that, we've noticed that a lot of employees that work for other local governments would like to transfer in vacation time because it takes. local governments would like to transfer in vacation time, because it takes so long to accrue vacation time. And we are proposing that they are allowed to transfer in some vacation time, but with the caveat that if they were to leave, we are not paying them out for that time that they transferred in. So if they have not used it, we do not pay that out to them.
Yeah, I saw that, Elizabeth. I think that's a good policy. I really do. I think it's a good change.
Yeah, it, it allows us when someone wants to, and we've had it come up with the building inspectors, for example, they've accrued three weeks of vacation. They come in to us and they get none, or get a week, or whatever it is. They're asking us to give them credit for their three weeks. We're saying we couldn't do it. This would allow us to do that, but if they left, we don't pay them the three weeks they brought with us. We only pay them for what they've accrued-
And we should.
While they worked with us. Yeah, so.
Bobby, just a, a question regarding the, the disability that you spoke to earlier. Is, is that a disability that is work-related or for any reason?
Uh, that's for any reason.
For any reason.
Any reason, okay.
Yep. A, a work-related disability goes through workers' comp. That's a whole different subject.
Yeah, that's right. That's why I was asking.
And so, again, Elizabeth's here to answer any questions that you've had. You've had a chance to look at it. The staff has looked at it. And if you're satisfied with it, or if you don't have questions, then there's a, I think a resolution-
Yeah.
-that you would approve tonight that would put this in effect. Again, there's a preamble. This is not a contract. We've made, clear it's not a employee's contract.
Yes, you did.
It's not an ordinance. It doesn't create a right. There's still employees. It will, as always. Nothing has changed there. And so, again, absent questions, and we're asking you to approve the resolution, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that the following policies, procedures shall govern the recruitment, selection, appointment, classification, salary, promotion, discipline, and dismissal, grievance rights, and all other conditions employment of employees of Dare County. That's the resolution.
Move to, move to approve the revised Human Resources Manual and adopt the resolution.
Second- There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman, but it's been seconded by Commissioner House. The floor is open for discussion. Anybody have anything? I do have something. Any board have anything? Bobby?
Pardon? Sorry.
Bobby, I, I, I'm harping on this numerous times, and it's at the point now where I would really like to see it in writing. And I do not see it in here with respects to a succession plan by departments in the county. I'd like to see it in writing. I do, have not seen it here. We've talked about it numerous times. We've, we've thrown it around, thrown it around, knocked it around, and we're getting to the point where we're, we've got aged individuals that are department heads, that are looking for retirement, potentially down the road, and we do not have anything concrete succession-wise. I'd like for us to, it's taken a year to look at this, but I need to see something, this is me personally, in writing in this HR manual. And it should be under the responsibility of Human Resources.
Okay.
So, we'll get you a succession plan. We, we can do a succession. In fact, we did one, that you and I did multiple years ago, and we can look at that and review it and bring that succession plan back to you for discussion. There's gonna take some effort by you all, because some departments, the succession plan is simply to look for the best available candidate from outside.
That's right.
That's right.
If you want a succession plan where you're gonna promote from within, then you're gonna have to have a commitment to hiring, I'll take Dave. If Dave goes, the succession plan is Sally. If Sally goes, there's no one behind Sally. If you want somebody behind Sally, we gotta hire a qualified person that can do that. That's true with most of our departments. And so, that succession plan is gonna be based on your input and what you tell us you're prepared to do. So it isn't a part of the personnel manual, because that governs our day-to-day personnel, but it is something that you want, and it's something that we can get. So I would say, let's decouple those and work on a succession plan and, and set up a, you know, some timeframe to do that in.
Well, we, we definitely need to do that, because we're kicking that can down the road.
I would agree with you, and I would agree with you. We do need to do it, but I would decouple it from the policy.
Then I'm fine with it.
It's, we, it's, we have administrative guidelines, and that would be something that would go in an administrative guideline outside of the HR manual.
I'm fine with that. However, we get it done. It needs to get done.
And, and I'll talk to you about how you all want to get your input involved. Do we want to have a workshop? Do you want to have a committee?
Y'all agree?
How do y'all want to be involved?
In what?
In how we do the succession plan, because the succession plan is gonna depend on what you're prepared to fund and not fund.
Right.
You're right.
That's right.
You're right. Nice way to bring it back to us.
All right, well, good. We're on the right page. Thank you. All right, those in favor of the motion before you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yes, thank you for your work, and also thank your staff. Yep. This is painstaking work, I know. So thanks.
Chairman, that brings us to item four, and that's the presentation of the 2024 Recommended Budget. If you'll do the slides, Dave, that would be great.
I don't think we're about to find out.
It's my pleasure to present to you the recommended Dare County budget for fiscal year 2023-24, in the amount of $224,553,176, with the general fund at $130,83,408 of that amount. The budget is balanced and is in accord and compliance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and is aligned with the priorities given by the Board of Commissioners at our workshops that we had concerning the budget. A planned fiscal year 2024-25 budget is also presented. The purpose of the annual budget process is to develop a fiscally responsible plan that enables the county to accomplish priorities established by the board. At a prior retreat, the board provided the following local strategic focus areas. A long-term financial planning for capital, and to maintain the capital planning stabilization of available funding through the use of a capital investment fund, and a long-term capital planning and debt affordability model. Next was economic development, and it was to continue beach nourishment efforts and address the demand for future projects, and determine additional project prioritization criteria utilizing a beach nourishment, debt, and affordability model. And next, to continue efforts toward affordable workforce housing through zoning and planning changes in various projects with the assistance of the state of North Carolina and the Development Finance Initiative of the UNC School of Government. Your next strategic focus was education, to continue the partnership with the Dare County Schools, using agreed-upon formula for local current expense and the capital investment fund to adequately address future capital needs, and to expand the College of the Albemarle Dare County Campus through a completed capital project and utilization of the Dare Care Guarantee and county-funded local scholarship program. Next was Human Resources, was to implement improvements in salary and benefits and the working environment, and the results of the Salary and Benefits Study effective January 1st of 2023. Next, you charged, yes, sir?
Not a, not a problem with anything you're sharing with us, Bobby. As I went through it, though, it struck me, one of the goals we might consider adding is safety and welfare, perhaps for consideration. Just the thought of how much effort and time we put against the sheriff, EMS, and DHHS, the, the collection of that safety and wellness as far as capturing, excuse me, as one of these key goals-
Sure.
-might be for consideration. But continue.
Great. You directed us to maintain all the current levels of services. The fiscal year 2023-24 budget includes no property tax increase. It preserves the high quality of service delivery to the citizens, property owners, and visitors, and addresses the goals of the boards, as I've just outlined. The negative effects of COVID-19 were short-lived in Dare County with higher than normal tourism levels beginning in June 2020 and continuing to date. The 2023 budget assumed that the elevated activity of the prior two years represents a new normal. The following table shows the original 2022 budget, the original 2023 budget, the requested 2024 budget, and then the managers' recommended 2024 budget. The capital improvements plan will be completed at some point in the future. The final 2024 budget document will include the adopted capital improvement plans if it's ready at that, it'll include that, Dave?
We had a talk.
It will include that if we're ready at that time, but it's not required to be adopted with the budget and the border CIP fund as well. Let's talk a minute about the general fund budget. The requested budget. We, the way we do this, we ask the department heads to make budget requests. We ask those to be delivered to us by the end of February, and we work from February until now, trying to figure out how to meet those needs, eliminate some of the requests, fund what we can, separate the needs and the wants. All those things we do to prioritize our spending. After the budget requests were submitted by the departments and the outside agencies, the requested expenditures exceeded projected revenues, creating a general fund, the requested deficit of $2.267 million. Those requests included $2.5 million for a 5% cost of living adjustment, $1.8 million for the fiscal year 2024 additional costs of salaries and fringes from the salary study implementation in fiscal year 2023, $1.5 million to increase local current expense to Dare County schools, $1.3 million to emergency medical services, $755,000 to information technology, $245,000 to emergency medical services helicopter, $199,000 to Parks and Recreation, $166,000 for insurance allocations, $142,000, almost $143,000 to the detention center, $129,000 to the College of the Albemarle, and $104,000 for grounds maintenance. Those were the requests in the, in the recommended budget. The, again, the recommended budget does not include a property tax increase. We're maintaining the property tax rate of 40.05 cents, and the recommendations that I have in the budget follow. The items in the above section, together with the following expenditures, reflect a net increase in the general fund of $6,118,000, which is about a 4.94% increase, and that's versus an inflation rate of about 6.4%. Discussion of the major items are in the following expenditure section, expenditure section of this message, and are as follows. Where the recommendations are, $1.8 million for the salary study implementation, $1.5 million for a 3% cost of living pay adjustment for full-time and part-time benefit eligible employees, $1.5 million to increase Dare County schools to local current expense funding, $666,000, $667,000 to emergency medical services, $625,000, and, and mind you, these are increases on top of current budgets. These aren't the total budgets for these departments. $625,000 to fund one-time requested items. These are, we call it the one-time things. These are cars, vehicles, things that you can buy once that you're not financing and don't create recurring costs for you. $185,000 for a medical emergency services helicopter, $166,000 for insurance allocation, $155,000 for information technology, $98,000 to the detention center, $86,000 to fleet maintenance, $68,000 for the tax assessor, $66,000 for the sheriff, $58,000 for grounds maintenance, $52,000 for Parks and Recreation, $29,000 for College of the Albemarle, and $20,000, $27,000 to the animal shelter. And then we had some savings. We had $70,000 savings in solid waste management, $117 in recycling, $207,000 in the Health Department, and $689,000 in our health insurance fund. Next, we look at revenues. On our revenues, the procs-
Before we jump to that-
Sure.
On the previous slide, we showed requested was a deficit of $2.3 million, requests over revenue.
Right.
We then move into managers' recommended of $6.118. It would be logical to assume that we trimmed in the managers' recommended the $2.267 deficit to get to $6.118.
That would be correct.
See how quickly I caught on to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby.
Okay. Yeah, that, what that says is, everything that was requested didn't get funded.
Right. So we brought it into balance, so that the-
Or it got funded at a lower level than was requested.
That's what I meant. You brought down and managed. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, next look at the revenue assumptions. Again, the property tax base increased to a taxable valuation of $17.3 billion, and that's 1.77% more than the prior year. The projected revenue from the property taxes, $69,388,240, using the same tax rate of 40.05 cents, and a collection rate of 99.64%, which was down from last year's 99.68%. In talking with Becky, that may improve, and so the possibility exists that that 99.64 could be a higher rate, and that revenue number could improve a little bit. Sales taxes. Sales taxes are projected using the North Carolina League of Municipalities projections for 2024 at 6% for the A-39. That's the local share taxes, and approximately 3.25% for the A-40 and the A-42, which are, have population-based metrics in them. The occupancy taxes budgeted 2024 at 3% over the projected 2023 amount. The, when you start looking at taxes, Dare County taxes versus other communities, the average county property tax rate in North Carolina for 2023 was 67 cents, with a low of 31 cents and a high of 99 cents. Dare County at 40.05 cents was the seventh lowest property tax rate. The effective tax rate, which is the tax rate adjusted to our sales-to-assessment ratio for the county, Dare County's effective rate was 39.24 cents, which ranked as the sixth lowest in the state. The average effective rate was 64.13, with a low of 28 and a high of $1.01. Again, Dare County's rate for 2024 at 40.05 cents would be the seventh lowest rate in the state of North Carolina. Let's take a look now at-
It continues to be-
At the fund balance. In 2024, the appropriated fund balance is $3,125,000, as within the Board of adopted policy of 3% or less of expenditures at 2.4%. The 2022 fund balance ended the year at a total of $99,72,656, and the unassigned fund ballot, the 2023 unassigned fund balance ended the year at $41,87,401, which is roughly 34.53%, which is $16 million over the board's policy of a minimum of 21%. The 2023 unassigned fund balance is currently projected to increase by approximately $2.8 million, which would take that to 35.07%. Any questions about fund balance? Next, we'll look at expenditures. All of the following items discuss changes from the 2023 budget. For personnel, in November of 2022, the board adopted the recommendation of a salary study performed by Evergreen Solutions at an estimated cost for the 2024 budget of $2.323 million. Due to turnovers and retirement, that 2024 cost is actually $1.86 million. All personnel related recommendations were made in light of the employment market conditions. From January of 2023 through April of 2023, the turnover rate for Dare County as a whole was down to 2.28%. However, there were still 64 full-time vacancies as of 4th, April 30th, 2023.
Sixty-four. That's nine percent. We're running nine percent vacancies. And that's probably been that way for a while. Yeah?
That's actually, I think, a little lower than it's been for a while. Yeah. Elizabeth, leave.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I was just- Yeah, Elizabeth, I was just looking for, she stepped out.
It was up in double digits for a while.
I gotta believe that put great pressure on your organization, Bobby.
So, yeah, so the personnel things that we've done have only been in effect for less than six months, but they appear to be working. We have been able to hire, we've just hired a building inspector. We went months and months and months and couldn't find building inspectors, so it seems to be helping. The health plan, good news there. The health plan has no projected increase for 2024. Plan costs in the general fund are $689,000 less than the year prior. Not many years where we've seen our healthcare experience be lower than the year preceding it, so that's good news for us. Some of the things we're doing with our wellness plans seem to be working and help us lower those costs. It appears to be, some of that appears to be the increased, due to the increased number of employees with co-pays and the increased number of employees with employee-only coverage, as well as the county wellness plan that we continue to promote in our partnership with the Outer Banks Hospital, with our employee clinic. Position changes, the 2024 recommended budget adds one position and eliminates 11 positions. All of those were pursuant to department requests. There's an elimination of two vacant grounds maintenance positions. There's elimination of six positions in health with two filling vacancies at the detention center and the sheriff's department. So in the health department, we lost two grant-funded positions for deputies and detention officers, and we were able to move them into vacant positions that we already had in the sheriff's department and at the detention center. We have additional of a senior social worker supervisor in health, and the elimination of three vacant positions in recycle. What I've referenced above does not include any position which may be created from the emergency medical service budget increase. That $600,000 in budget increase is increase that is to use for employees and to help them meet their service needs. We were able to fund all of their increased costs. We were able to fund all of their items and materials that they needed, but they were looking for a lot more in employees than we're able to fund, and so that will allow them to meet some of those and fill some of those positions. Employee compensation. The 2024 budget recommends a 3% cost of living increase for full-time and part-time benefit eligible employees at a rate at a cost of $1.5 million. We had looked at a 5% increase. There was no way to fit that other million, million and a half dollars into the budget and make it balance and do that, so 3% is what we can afford, and so 3% is what is being recommended. It maintains the 3% employee year 401 plan contribution, and it maintains the merit one-time bonus plan. I'll tell you that we've gotten some recommendations from Evergreen, our consultant, about our bonus plan. They're gonna, and when we come back with the budget and with our budget changes, I'll bring it up again then, but they're recommending that rather than make it a one-time bonus, that we include the bonus in the salary so that it makes some effort to move people through the grade, and we've had discussions back and forth about that. That will have very little impact on the 2024 budget, but it will impact the 2025 budget because you'll be carrying over that expense, and so we can talk about that some more, but I can tell you that's coming. For the capital outlay, there's an information section for improved capital outlays that are budgeted in the capital investment funds, and some of those are discussed in the following section. In the Dare County schools, the funding of the local current expense uses the school funding formula agreed upon in 2016, resulting in a net increase of 1.3 million or 5.3% higher than recent years due to a CPI rate of 6.2% and a match to the state cost of living pay adjustment.
That's what the two were, the CPI and the state cost of legis-
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about it, but that's-
Yeah. Bobby, go back to-
Sure.
-compensation. Does our consultant folks feel like, you know, we've talked about doing a COLA now every year from now instead of jumping around, and then what they suggest with the bonus plan, will the combination of those two help towards compression?
The COLA doesn't help you with compression because COLA moves everybody up.
Right.
And so if we're compressed, we're just compressed at a higher rate.
But does the bonus help at all?
The bonus could help us, but our bonus, we only have $525,000 or something like that in the bonus, and so you're spreading that across your employee base. That doesn't move very many people very far. The most you can get in the bonus, I think, is $2,500. And so if you got a five on your rating, you'd get a $2,500 bonus, you know, on an employee that makes $50,000. That doesn't move them very far in the scale, and over their 30-year career, if they got a five every year, it wouldn't take them.
Gotcha.
So I think, as we've talked about before, there's only really two ways we can solve compression. One is you fund annually some number to move people through the grade, or two, you do what we've been doing, and every five to seven years, you do a salary study and you come up with four or five million dollars to readjust everybody's salary, which does away with the compression, and then you allow it to compress for five more years and do it again, and those are your choices.
You're right, Bobby. That's true.
You know, and to fund it, if we're saying that, let's just say we're doing a salary study every five years and it's costing us $5 million, and that's a million dollars a year that you've got to put in your plan to move people forward, and that is going to compound everything else, because when you spread that million dollar out over staff, their salaries go up. Well, now, when you give a 3% COLA or whatever, it's based on that plus whatever you've just bumped it up, so they compound the costs, and so it gets fairly expensive, but it's kind of pay me now or pay me later.
I have just a quick question since we're on schools. We have this that was included, Dave, in the handout, I believe. It was a one-pager with the accumulation of the full 24 recommended budget. The schools is the very first line at $28,303, and on this slide that you're presenting, it's basically $26,909. I was just curious what I might have been missed, what I've missed in terms of the schools in comparing this.
The manager's recommended budget on that sheet is 28,306,301?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm looking at-
In the middle column?
I'm looking at, is that the 1,400, school nurses?
Is this the sheet you're talking about?
This is the sheet, and then I'm looking at the slide you've got on.
And I don't know about the slide. I'm looking on my sheet. The 28,306,301 is the correct number irrespective of what you're looking at on the slide.
But I'm thinking that if I add local current expense-
The slide's just the local current expense.
I get 28.3 by adding in school nurses and resource officers.
If you add, correct. If you add the resource officers to that, you'll get that 28 number.
I love tying them from one to the other. That's all I'm trying to do, so I don't know the numbers are changing. Thank you. 28.3. So, just real quick. $28 million local current expense does not, I'm looking at Dave, does not include school capital projects. He's saying yes. So the school capital would be in addition to the $26,909 shown here before the resource officers and nurses.
Correct. This is just what comes out of the general fund.
Yeah, and not to answer now, but I'd be curious, how many school districts out of the 106, I think, Mary Helen, 107 in the state of North Carolina contribute a greater amount than $28.3 million in local contribution to their schools?
I don't know about the gross number, but the per pupil number, we're in the top two.
That's right. We're in the top with per pupil.
We're the second highest county.
Orange was one time, I thought, ahead of us in the last ex-
Last year.
Yeah.
They still are. And then systems, Chapel Hill City and Asheville City, because the city themselves levying additional tax for the system, so.
So we have county systems and we have city-run systems.
Right, right.
And comparable to counties, where two, if you plug in the cities as well, we're third, I guess, or fourth, yeah.
I just think that's something that's significant, because I hear a lot of, you know, we don't do enough, we aren't doing enough, and I feel like-
And again, that 28 thing doesn't include the capital items, as you pointed out.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Just, it's a significant number, guys. That's all I'm pointing out here.
All right. The pupil enrollment projections, the NC DPI projection for the fall of 2022 was 5,171. The actual ADM for 2022 was 4963. The NC DPI projection for the fall of 2023 is 5,036. For the last 11 years, 2014 and through 2024, the local current expense funding excluding school nurses and resource officers and the five-year annual deferred maintenance funding in 2015 through 2019 has increased 35.62% from $19,831 to $26,895. This increase represents an average of 3.2% per year increase versus an average inflation rate of 2.6%, not including whatever the 2023 inflation rates turn out to be. Over that same period, the pupils have increased by about a half a percent from 5,010 to 5,036. The 2016 funding agreement with the schools included a target school general fund balance of $1 million due to prudent management and use of the CARES Act grant funds. The schools' fund balance of the general fund ended 2021 at $3,668,000. The only method available under state law to return the balance over the, above the target to the county was to reduce the annual local current expense appropriation with an equal and concurrent appropriation of fund balance by the Dare County School for one year effective only in fiscal year 2023. That one-time 2023 reduction is not reflected in the slide that you have before you. We move on to our departments. In the animal shelter, the budget adds $27,450 to the SPCA contract for operating costs. This is their first increase in their budget for many years, and when I say many, I don't really know how many. It's been a very long time since we've changed the dollars in their operating budget. The College of the Albemarle, the budget maintains $250,000 for local scholarships to the College of the Albemarle, and the budget adds $29,736 for additional operating costs. In the detention center, there's $98,742 added for operating cost, increases over 11 line items in the budget. In EMS, there's $667,000 is added for items to be prioritized by the EMS director and approved by the county manager, and that's in line with what I just told you about the personnel issues we had talked about. In emergency medical services helicopter, there's $185,000 is added for fuel and other operating cost expenses. In ground maintenance, an increase of $58,683 included net of two eliminated positions, and that's to change to contracted services for a portion of the job task. This change is a result of our inability to attract qualified applicants even with the recent salary increases, and so we're having to go outside our own forces to do the ground maintenance in some of our areas. You have a pie chart in front of you coming up that sort of breaks up by percentages where we spend our money. I skipped a page.
Yeah, yeah. Health Department.
Where's the-
Page nine.
Page 12.
All right, we're going to the Health Department in 2022. Yeah, there's a page.
12 on the slide.
All right, go to the Health Department. The budget of the Health Department decreased by $207,711. This budget eliminates six positions and adds one senior social worker supervisor position. The dental van program is eliminated because of our inability to hire a dentist, even with a very competitive salary. The services will be replaced with a contract service covered by Medicare or other non-county reimbursements. Just for your information, the savings from eliminating the dental van is going into the mental health category to help us try to solve some of those problems as well.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I don't want to drill into this tonight, but, you know, I've talked to vice chair about this. I think I've talked to Irv about this. The whole aspect of the mental health slash, I don't know, anxiety that's in our community and the need for services, counselors, support professionals. Again, I just, I guess I'm looking at eliminate six positions. You know, if those were drivers, I'd say, I get it, but when I hear about what we're seeing in terms of the post-COVID effects on kids in the schools, I just spent with the sheriff a little while breakfast with the local hotline. With regard to substance abuse, domestic violence, I mean, I'm wondering, am I getting just hyperbole in anecdotal evidence and we're just fine, or are there positions that might be re-added to the six that would be, and again, I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, I'm more or less just raising a question for Sheila.
For the most part, the elimination of those positions were grant-funded positions and whatever the grant-funded-
Oh, okay.
Doesn't exist anymore.
All right. I didn't, it didn't say grant-funded.
Right.
Okay.
Some of them, we moved to other departments, as I mentioned before, to the sheriff's department and to detention.
Okay.
Some we did not.
Okay.
Move on to information technology. There's $155,000 added for Google services, cost increases mainly for email retention required by the public information laws. In parks and recreation, we added $52,000 for programming supplies, officials and fuel Somebody's going to call you about pickleball, but pickleball is being done out of current money, not out of this budgeted money, so that's still on the table and being worked on as well. In recycling, the budget is reduced by a net of $117,000, eliminating three long vacant positions and converting this to contracted services as well. It seems that where we can't hire, we are now having to go on the market and contract those services, and typically that's coming at a greater expense than what it costs us to hire our own people, but we don't have choices. In the sheriff's department, we added $66,000 mainly for fuel costs. The tax assessor, we added $68,000, and that's cost for the 2025 revow to be effective on 1-1, 2025. Transfer to other funds, that's the transfer to the capital investment fund, is maintained at the board policy of $10,425,000. An additional transfer of $625,000 is included to cover one-time cost items in the capital investment fund, as we talked about in our workshop. Transfers in total are reduced as the 2023 2.6 million one-time local current expense reductions to Dare County schools was used to make one-time transfers of $2 million to the Stormwater Fund and $668,000 to the inlet maintenance fund. And then $224,000 budget expenditures by function are shown and compared in the following charts, and that's what I had skipped a page to get to. That chart sort of shows where we put our money. This is not much different than the charts that you've seen in the past. You know, our public safety is a large part of our budget. Our education is a large part of our budget. They're the two largest ones by some significant amount. Talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan. The 15 counties, the 53 counties in the state that have U.S. Fish and Wildlife lands, each received a grant which- each received a grant which may be used for any lawful purpose other than lobbying. The county grant was 523,000 and is budgeted along with interest savings in the American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Fund. The recommended uses for the grant are one-time expenditures requested in the general fund and capital improvement funds, and they're listed in the capital outlays schedule in the information section of the budget as discussed with the board during our workshop. Step forward to the planned 2025 budget. Planned is the key word there, we're not allowed to adopt a budget a year in advance. Uh, but we do try to plan in two-year increments, and so this is the planned budget to make your job and our jobs a little bit easier next year when we come back uh, at budget time. Uh, the planned budget for 2025 maintains the current tax rate, includes a 3% cost of living pay adjustment, a 5% increase to the health plan, and an increase for emergency medical services. Uh, the manager's 2025 budget is 133,699,000, an increase of 3.6 million or 2.8% over the fiscal year 2024 budget. Uh, the requested deficit was about 4.7 million dollars. Um, I will tell you that to balance that budget, we held some revenue numbers at current levels when we come back at budget time. Next year, we'll look at those revenues and see if that projection holds true. Uh, we're not, no one kind of knows what revenue's going to do. Uh, if those change, then what we've done for the projected budget will change uh, to reflect whatever the revenue projections are at that time. Uh, the capital improvements fund and the capital improvements plan. As you know, the capital improvement plan does not have to be approved uh, with the budget. It can be approved really at any time that you all wish. Uh, I'll tell you that we had a capital improvement committee meeting earlier in the week. With the cost of what it's costing us to do the things that we've been talking about all these years, it looks like we're not going to have the funding levels or the potentials there, that we won't have the funding levels to do everything that we said in the timeframe that we said we wanted to do it in. And it's going to require us to go back and reprioritize how we spend our money um, going forward. Uh, we've got Dave and we've got our um, financial advisors working on our models to, to look at that. And at some point, we'll come back to the capital improvement committee and show you where we are, what we're doing, what our capacity to go forward is. We'll get recommendations from the capital improvement committee, and then we'll come back to you as the full board and share those recommendations with you. Uh, with that said, I'll go with, through this just briefly. Uh, the, the fund is, is separately budgeted as a part of the general fund. And for financial reporting purposes, the capital investment fund is considered, is consolidated into the general fund in the annual audit report, along with the disaster recovery fund and the law enforcement officer separation allowance. The fund structure in the information section of the budget for a further explanation of these funds. Uh, in conjunction with the capital investment fund, the county and its financial advisors maintain a capital planning and debt affordability model that I just spoke of. Uh, use of the capital investment fund separates budgeting for, from operations uh, for that capital. The general fund's contribution to the capital investment fund was set by the board at the 2019, in 2019 at a cost of 10.42, 10, 10,425,000. Uh, the model also includes plans for major items like roof replacements, heating and air conditioning replacements, major equipment replacements, and major maintenance to the Dare Flight Airbus helicopter. Model development is in process, is expected to be presented to the board. It says here on June 5th, I don't know for sure whether it'll be ready. It's likely not to be ready on June 5th, uh, but if we can do it that fast, we will. Uh, the approved capital plan will be incorporated into the final budget document if we can get it ready by that time. But I'm, again, given our discussions, I don't think we can do that work and get it in a position where you can make decisions uh, before June 5th.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
If we push it to July, meaning that's okay.
Yeah. We have other, other funds, uh, we have the disaster recovery fund. The disaster recovery fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund. It budgets for software disaster recovery services and $100,000 for the initial response to any emergency. Board policy is to maintain an ending disaster recovery total fund balance of 1% of the general fund budget. And at June 30th, 2022, that percentage was at 1.1%.
So it's just over a million dollars in there.
Right. In the E911 fund, the budget includes additional funding requests to the NC E911 board, and those additional expenditures are conditioned upon state funding approval. The beach nourishment fund budget is set per the beach nourishment financial model. The 2024 expenditures were, were down as the 2023 expenditures were elevated as it was the one year where the overlaps of debt service with the original Buxton and municipal projects with the debt service for the 2022 summer maintenance projects came for the same areas. The town's maintenance project occurred in the summer of 2022, except for Duck, which is, which is under construction and is planned to be completed prior to the real day. And I'll say they have completed that in both Duck and Southern Shore. So those projects are complete, other than removing the, the sublines and getting their equipment out of there. The town's maintenance, probably, let's see, the county maintenance project for the Buxton and a new project for Avon were completed in the summer of 2022. FEMA reimbursements for the Buxton project for Hurricanes Florence and Dorian have been received, and the related temporary debt was called and retired on April 10th. In the sanitation fund, the sanitation fund's property tax rate is increased from 10 cents to 11 cents per the recommendation of the solid waste study completed in 2022. As you recall, we were using fund balance to keep those rates down. And in 2022, we finally used up as much of the fund balance as we can and, and had to start adjusting rates to meet costs. Uh, the reported model plan is for a one-year increase in three of the following, of the four following years to 13 cents in 2027. The study also determined that the county should switch to a higher-grade, more expensive truck chassis with a longer life and lower maintenance cost, resulting in lower lifetime cost. Uh, the 2023 budget included, per the study, a higher number of truck replacements, five instead of three, and financing those trucks over 59 months instead of 36 months. In the water fund, the water fund, the water rate model done by Rattellis Financial Company update for 2024 has been completed, and the 2024 shows an annual 2% rate increase over the next five years. And that's in line with what we have been doing in that rate model. Uh, the recommended water CIP is in process and is expected to be presented to the board at a later date. Uh, the improved capital improvements plans will be incorporated into the final budget document if it's available at that time. Uh, our internal service funds, the county maintains two internal service funds, the insurance fund and the fleet maintenance fund, and adopts financial plans for each. Um, the, in the insurance fund, as discussed in the general fund, the health plan has no projected increase for 2024. The county has also switched to a high deductible as worker compensation insurance plan and to continues to work with a contracted result consultant, risk versity on those insurance issues. In the fleet maintenance fund, uh, the fund is projected to maintain its fund balance of approximately $300,000. With that said, that would be the budget, the recommended budget. Uh, the board's requested to hold a public hearing on the budget during the June 5th meeting. Uh, if you need to have additional workshops between now and then, you can. Uh, this board had, the budget must be adopted before July the 1st, so by June 30th. Uh, if we have the public hearing on July 5th and you're satisfied with the budget at the conclusion, I mean, June the 5th.
Yes, sir.
And you're satisfied with the budget at that time, you can adopt it at that meeting. Uh, if you have questions or you need more information, in the meantime, you can talk to us. Generally, after we present the budget, we find some changes that we need to make. Uh, I already mentioned one of those to you. There are usually two or three more, um, when we have the public hearing. I'll share those with you at our meeting on the 5th, and you will be asked to include those if you choose to in the final doc. And we will tell you how we're going to accomplish paying for whatever those changes might be. With that said, if there's questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and the ones I can't answer, I'll get Dave to answer.
Any questions, Bobby?
Yeah, I've got one. Uh, on the healthcare plan for the uh, employees' health, health plan, how often do we shop those?
Um...
And is there any way that we could leverage to get a better policy than what we have?
So we don't have a policy.
Or?
So, so we're, we're self-insured.
Self-insured.
So, so all of our healthcare costs are coming out of our, but our med cost is simply a management company that manages the, our dollars. They, they're the ones that the claims go into so that the finance department doesn't have to decide whether they're the right pay rates and all that stuff, the, the right codes, the right Medicare reimbursement, all that. They manage all of those things. And so we pay, I don't know what it is, a dollar per employee or something like that, some number. Can't remember what it is. It's not super expensive, but that's how we pay for that. But the, if you are a county employee and, and you have to have surgery, we pay that out of Dare County tax dollars that we put in the insurance fund. It doesn't come from Blue Cross Blue Shield or some
Right.
insurance plan. And now, claims that are greater than some level, we have what they call stop-loss insurance. And so if your claim, if you have a heart transplant, then that would trigger the stop-loss. And then we have an insurance company that comes in and pays everything above whatever the stop-loss rate is. And that shop, each year, uh, the consultant goes out to find a stop-loss carrier uh, to cover the stop-loss costs.
I got you. Does, that is just the, the main thing that I've been hearing from some of our employees, I won't say all of them, but from some employees, is about the high deductibles.
Well, that's a choice we made.
Yeah.
And we can change those whenever we want. They, they, that plan and the terms of that plan, deductibles and all those things are based on what we've done and what our history has been and how we've handled things. And to keep our costs in line with where, you remember, five years ago, we had a $4 million deficit.
Yeah, we were way out.
Um, and so, yeah, and, and those, those have improved, I think, uh, didn't we change the deductible last year? So they, they're better than they were. They might not be as good as somewhere else, but they're better than they were. So we have done that, you did that in the last budget.
Any other questions, Bobby? Then I need a motion to set a public hearing for June 5th.
So moved.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Rob Ross, it's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
I don't think you need anything else. Would that, that be your agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, County Manager. That brings us to item five, Commissioner's business.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes, sir.
You man kicking it off?
Thanks.
Um, so, follow up on what Wally was talking about on the housing and, uh, cluster housing and so forth. I just wanted to just have, uh, I've got some concerns. And my concerns are not necessarily, um, whether related to the cluster, not the cluster housing, but, cluster housing, but also it was really related to the development that the Saga has there on the beach at 706 Ocean Boulevard, which is right on the ocean side. Wally, I sent you a picture of it.
I, I don't know where 706 Ocean Boulevard is.
Okay, it's exactly in front of the...
What town are we in?
Kildale Hills.
Kildale Hills.
It's on the Beach Road, Virginia.
It's, it's between Stop and Shop and Avalon and Jolly Roger. Right before you get to the main entrance of the Wright Memorial, um, you, right before you get that turn from the VTR, it's right back from there. You'll see them. It's 14 houses on one lot.
Can't miss them.
Huh?
Can't miss them.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's one of the same, it's some of the property that the Hanes underwear people used to own the property.
Yeah.
They sold at the Saga, and Saga built these houses. The problem I got, guys, is these houses are so close together. It's not what the Outer Banks is. I mean, it not only looks out of place, um, and I'm afraid for redevelopment in other areas of unincorporated Dare. One I brought to Bob's attention this morning, and I had a very intense conversation with Noah about this also. Just for instance, if the, just some developer went and bought the Doughty property down in Rodanthe, and they put these houses on there, I bet you could have 400 houses on that property, the way these guys have laid out. That's not my beach, that's not what I want Dare County to look like. It's completely overdevelopment, just like Brad Alexander did once he's with the Cluster Homes. This guy has done on the Beach Road down there. Kildale Hills was so taken back by it, I, I talked to two of their board members at a, at a, um, tourist bureau meeting, and they've sent it back to their planning department because it was out of character what they intended. A cottage development is what it's supposed to be called ordinance to be. Cottage, uh, not a cottage court development, cottage court development.
Like the old Miller Court.
Oh, exactly. It was also like the Sun and Sand Motel. The Sun and Sand Motel had 16 little cottages together, and they were one-story. This guy put these three-story highs in there, and they're 48 foot tall, you can't see the ocean. You look from one window, and it's exactly parallel to the next window.
Well, nobody don't buy them.
I'm afraid that they will buy it.
They will buy them.
I'm afraid they will buy it.
Inventory's low, right now they'll buy.
They've got 14 of them on there now, if they haven't already sold them.
They'll buy it and lease it.
No, we're in them, yeah. Yeah.
So anyways, I'm, I'm just saying that we need to also, when we have what Wally's suggesting, send it back for the Cluster Home, look at, we need to look in unincorporated Dare. What are we doing? What vision do we want to take for the future? The original land use plan, and another thing I wanted to request, when's the last time we did a land use plan update?
I think the one he had tonight was 2009, but I think there's one in process.
Wait, wasn't, isn't, doesn't camera require you to do one every seven years?
I don't know the answer.
I did two, I did two of those in the sound of Kitty Hawk when I tenure there.
I'd have to ask, no, I don't know the answer.
Maybe that's something we need to do when we look at as a planning board to look at our long-term land use plan.
I agree.
You know, years ago, the land use plan in, in Dare County, it went something like small beach residential community with singular septic systems per lot. And somewhere in there that says that. We're not there, we're not there anymore.
How, how do you solve?
Well, I'm not saying we solve or change things. Well, what, what I would say to do is to maybe bring back in the developmental issues. You know, you can do it on the Cluster Homes by in, increasing dens, increasing the distance between the two houses.
densities.
Decreasing.
Decreasing density, yeah.
Yes.
In, increasing
Correct.
um, green space within a development.
Right. That's where I was headed.
And you can do the same thing with these monstrosities they call on this cottage court down there that they developed out. I bet there's 20 foot between the two houses. It's crazy. Rob, I don't look at him, Rob, he'll say, my God, it doesn't belong here.
I, I'm just trying to follow. I don't know all these developments, I'm following your logic, and I'm trying to stay with you on this. You're basically saying too much development, too dense, not beach cottage, right?
Right.
Okay.
So your, your issue is going to become, you're, at one extreme, if you're really trying, if you're trying to solve affordable housing and you take one extreme approach.
No, that's, listen to that.
Just, let me, then you can increase density to crazy numbers like you're talking about, and all of a sudden, you've got all these housing units on little teen lots, which is what you don't want. At the other end of the spectrum, you can make density so low that you can't solve your housing problem. And so some, how you gotta, with the community, come to some balances. Where do you put multifamily? Where you do put it, what density do you allow? How much can you accept? And, and, and that's not everywhere, and, and that's what you gotta, I mean, I think that's what you're saying. You gotta sort through where you're going to have what kind of density to do what, whatever you're going to. There may be a place where you can have, you know, five to an acre, and another place where you can only have two to an acre or something. I don't know, you just, but that's what you gotta sort through. If you take it all back to single-family lots with one septic tank, then you're not going to have anywhere that you can put a, a housing for a teacher or whatever. You gotta make a space somewhere to deal with those kind of problems. And that's the, the puzzle that we gotta put together.
And, and I agree with that. Now, one thing I do will tell you that they brought, and everybody keeps saying the housing, housing, housing. We need to separate the essential housing, completely separate that from what we're talking about here.
How do you do that, Irv?
Well...
Just tell me how to do that, because I'm wide open, honest to God I am.
You have density.
I want to hear how to do it.
You have density bonuses for long-term rentals with great restrictions on it. If you covenant your houses to meet whatever our goal is for affordability, then we'll give you a... then we'll give you a density bonus, you can get X to the acre. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, but your density is this, and so there are ways, tools that you can use to do that if you, if that's what your goal is.
You know, something they alluded to tonight about the, even Alder talked about it. Somewhere our housing is going to get solved, you know, I think it was the March numbers of the tourist bureau that came back, the Airbnbs were down to seventy-three percent from the previous year. There's fourteen thousand Airbnbs in Dare County.
Yeah, the market will satisfy it, they will stop coming, and our housing won't be a problem, we won't need people. Yeah, I'm serious.
And, and I'm just telling you, yeah.
It's, it's true, the market works that way.
Yeah, yeah, and that
If we squeeze it tight enough, nobody will work, the businesses will close, or else they'll deliver crap service, and vacation rentals will decline, and then demand will go down, and we won't have the problem. That's the way it works, has for all, well, as long as open markets have operated.
Right. But anyway, I don't know where y'all want to go with this, whatever, I just kind of wanted to throw this out for a discussion at some time, for the planning board to look at and see what they can come up with. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Vice chairman? Mr. House?
Uh, yeah, a couple things real quick. Last month, House Bill six fifty-five was introduced, we're keeping a close eye on this one. It is entitled an act to amend the statutes pertaining to coastal fishing to ease regulatory burdens and enhance access to fisheries for bona fide commercial fishermen. Everything I've read in here is opposite of that fact. Yeah, imagine that. And it's, it's from our, a lot of our representatives who sponsored, co-sponsored it. The same guys that are, that have always done this in the past, which has ties to the CCA, obviously. So, we're keeping a close eye on that one, it's in the wildlife committee right now, and it's been there for a month, and if it comes out of that, then it goes to Coast Marine Fisheries Committee in the House, so we're keeping an eye on that, see what's going on with it. Normally, on special meetings, I don't do a day in history, but we've got some exciting things that have happened a day in history on this day. Nineteen seventy-three, Senate committee was formed to investigate the Watergate hearings, and the chairperson on there was Senator Sam Irving, Democrat from North Carolina. Seventeen ninety-two, the York, New York Stock Exchange was founded by three brokers standing underneath a tree in New York, and guess what street they were on?
Wall.
Wall Street.
I knew it.
This one's just for you, Rob.
Here it comes.
Eighteen seventy-five, the first Kentucky Derby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He was there.
In the same jacket.
In the same, in the same pink jacket.
Next year's one hundred and fiftieth, folks, it's going to be a party.
Thank you, Commissioner House, Commissioner Ross.
I will be extremely brief, I had a great breakfast the other day, again, with a group called the Outer Banks Hotline. The services they provide and the numbers of folks that are experienced, experiencing abuse, violent, violence-related issues, just just was very painful. Sheriff Doughty was there with me at breakfast, heard the presentation, toured their facilities in Nag's Head, and I'm going to do a brief radio spot, the radio station has offered to do these complimentary, it's just a fifteen-second spot that basically says Outer Banks men support the efforts of, of the hotline group because, again, this kind of this kind of stuff has no place in any community, let alone our own, so I just wanted to share that and, and give a shout-out to the OVX Hotline for the work they're doing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. County manager, do you have anything else this evening?
Yes, sir.
That's a first.
I think he said it a little while ago.
That's a first.
Well, it's got to be something.
I'll think of something if you're looking.
No, it's okay, stand down, county manager.
Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, you see your smiling face up there, do you have anything?
Not anything to bring up tonight, thank you.
How about Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I need a motion to adjourn until nine a.m. on June the fifth. It's been, motion's been made by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, that's right.
Further discussion, hearing good, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously.